Oh, isn't that lovely? Hear me. If I can have everyone in the audience, please take one of the designated seats so we can get started and then if you can't find a seat, we will be funneling in and exchanging people for the social distancing guidelines and stuff. Thank you so very much. Tomorrow, are you first ready? Ready? Everybody ready? Okay. So I'm going to call Board of Supervisors to order. Ms. Ralay, will you please give us a roll call?
Supervisor Giomi.
Here.
Supervisor White.
Here.
Supervisor Jones.
Present.
Supervisor Shutey.
Here.
Mayor Bagwell.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you so very much. We're going to have our invocation now. Louis Locke from the Fountainhead Foursquare Church. Hi.
Thank you. We're pretty good. Lord, we thank you for this beautiful day. We thank you for the beauty of our community, not only in physical of it, but the people of it. And in that respect, we pray for the continuing blessing of the people of our community. Pray for our sheriffs. Pray for our firefighters, staff at the hospitals, all those who care for us and protect us. We thank you for your grace. We have wisdom on our supervisors as they make decisions concerning our community. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much. Would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. As always, thank you for a great start to our day. We're going to move on to our public comment with the public here. We're so happy to be back in front of all of you. This is a wonderful day. I want to do a couple little housekeeping items. I want to thank Mr. Lee Plemmel for his outstanding service to Carson City. He is retiring and going to just go have some fun with his wife, traveling and enjoying life. And we just want to, behalf of this board, say what a great job he's done and we're really going to miss him. And welcome Hope Sullivan into his promotion for his position and then Heather Ferris. We have big shoes to fill, but we have high hopes. And then I also would like to let the public and everyone know that the Nevada Peace Officers' Memorial will be at Legislative Square today at 1:00. If you have a chance to stop by and pay your respects, it would be appreciated. Let's see. We'll move on to general public comment. Who would like to go first? Kelly? All right, come on over. Morning.
My name is Kelly Norman. I am the Transportation Planner and Western Nevada Safe Routes to School Coordinator with Carson City Public Works. Western Nevada's, may I take off my mask? Or are we not doing that? Are we keeping them on?
If you could leave it on, we'd appreciate it. Just that way we don't have to try and clean every microphone immediately and thank you.
Western Nevada Safe Routes to Schools' primary mission is to engage, encourage, and educate children about how and why it's important to safely walk and bike to school. Today, I'm here to let everyone know about Nevada Moves Week, which is being celebrated this week with movement at 10 schools throughout Carson City, Douglas, and Lyon Counties. Bike to School Day officially May 5th yesterday is also being celebrated throughout the week and the month at different schools. Bethany Henry Herman at Fritsch Elementary is planning a group walk to school this week. Beatrice Rosales, Western Nevada Safe Routes to School Champion and Teacher with Gardinerville Elementary, along with Albert Yaquez, Education Coordinator with Nevada Department of Transportation or leading a bike train from Stotig Park to the school as we speak. One of my favorite principals, educators, and administrators with the Carson City School District, Lee Connolly, Principal at Eagle Valley Middle School, consistently participates in Bike to School Days and is planning to reward his students who ride with hot chocolate and sweet swag from Western Nevada Safe Routes to School on Friday, May 7. Western Nevada Safe Routes to School is also participating in some of Muscle Powered's Bike Month events, May is Bike Month, like the Celebrity Ride on May 14 and Choose Your Cruise on May 26. I also want to emphasize that these planned events are not the only way that parents and kids can participate in Nevada Moves Week or Bike Month. Parents can choose to park their car a few blocks from school and walk their child into school. They can plan a bike route to school and let their child feel the accomplishment of biking to school on their own. Taking time to make meaningful moments like this in your child's life is the time it takes to create future pedestrian and cyclist leaders in the community. That concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Do I have anyone else with public comment?
Good morning.
So you usually don't see me during public comment, but I'm here representing myself, the Nevada Nurses Association, of which I'm Vice President for, and also Director of Carson City Health and Human Services. Today, May 6, is Nurses' Day. Nurses' Day is always on May 6 because that's Florence Nightengale's birthday. So I just want to say a thank you to all of our nurses out there that have been doing all kinds of jobs, especially during COVID, taking care of those with COVID and then backfilling other positions. And really through this pandemic, you haven't heard a lot about the public health nurses. I want to say a huge thank you to all the public health nurses out there as well and especially my staff, you know, that are on the front lines giving shots and have been doing the testing. So thank you.
Oh, thank you. Just want to echo those sentiments on the board's behalf. The nurses are just phenomenal in our community and we just couldn't have survived as well without them. So please pass on our thank yous. Do I have any public comment further in here? Ms. Aker, will you ask Stephanie if there's anyone out there for public comment to rotate in? Just in case. I'd like a little. We're good? Okay, then we're going to move on to Agenda Item Number 6, which is approval of our minutes for April 1, 2021. Does anyone have any corrections or issues? Otherwise, I'll take a motion, please.
Sorry, a little behind on things. I move to approve the meeting minutes for the Board of Supervisors meeting April 1, 2021.
I have a motion by Supervisor Giomi and a second by Supervisor White for the approval of the minutes. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say no. Motion carried unanimously. Thank you. If I can turn the paper past to you. We're going to move on to Agenda Item Number 7, which is all of our special presentations. And what I'm going to do today is read the proclamation and then have comments from any of the particular presentations. And then at the end of 7E, we will actually leave the diocese come up front and you'll have to, again, remain masked and I'll hand out your proclamation. We can take a picture. So that's the process we're going to take. So the first one we have is Agenda Item 7A, which is a proclamation just in support of the National Drug Court Month. So whereas there are now more than 3,000 treatment courts nationwide, and whereas treatment courts are the cornerstone of justice reform sweeping the nation, and whereas they are recognized as the most successful justice system intervention in our nation's history, and ours is no exception. I just thought I'd add that. Whereas treatment courts substantially reduce addiction and related crime and do so at less expense than any other criminal justice strategy. Whereas treatment courts demonstrate that when one person rises out of substance abuse and crime, we all rise. Now therefore, I, Lori Bagwell, Mayor of Carson City, Nevada, on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim that May 2021 be established as National Drug Court Month. Thank you. And I believe the judges are going to come and give us a presentation, please. Judge Armstrong.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning. Good morning.
Okay, better sit down. It's uncomfortable to sit down to address everybody. The trial lawyer in me wants to stand and present, however, that's, those are some years ago since that happened. I appreciate you indulging us here this morning and it's good to see a lot of familiar faces and familiar faces in new places. Congratulations to all of you and thank you for all you do for Carson City. My name is Tom Armstrong. I am the Justice of the Peace in Department 1, appointed by this board back in 2011 and have run for a couple of elections since then. And I'm here on behalf with a number of other judges and we're going to present briefly, we hope, on what's going on regarding the drug court, specialty courts here in Carson City. Some of you have had come to observe and have a firsthand idea, but I think it's a good day, a good month for us to educate the public. So we have five specialty courts in the First Judicial District, which is Carson City, Story County, the Western Regional Drug Court, the Western Regional DUI Court, DUI Felony Court, Misdemeanor Treatment Court, Mental Health Court, and Juvenile Drug Court. And the judges that preside over each one of those is here today and they can present on their court individually. And I'll introduce them now. We're going to have Senior Judge Archie Blake there in the back. He's a pioneer in drug courts in the state of Nevada and he can toot his own horn a little bit on that, but he's been doing this for a long time and is, you know, for lack of a better term, the OG on drug courts in Carson City. And he presides over, together with the co-judge, Western Regional Drug Court and the Western Regional Felony DUI Court. I'm going to present on misdemeanor treatment court. Some of you have come and seen that. You guys know who I am. Judge Lewis, Justice of the Peace Judge Lewis there in the back. She's going to present on her mental health court, which is a pioneering program in this state as well, started by Judge Chaitro some time ago. And Special Master Okazie, the juvenile master, is here and she is going to present on the juvenile drug court. So without further ado, we're going to get this going and I'm going to start and we have Senior Judge Blake come in and present on his two courts. We'll go through at the end. We'll have some general education and we'll take any questions you have. So thanks, Early.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I had a hard time. You can do it.
I was just going to say.
I had a hard time finding this place. When I lived in Carson City, we only came to this building to play basketball at noon. So, and I haven't met most of you, but I do recognize the Giomi name since John Giomi and I were law partners a thousand years ago, it seems like. Okay, we basically started, when I say we, that would be the judges in Lyon County, Carson City, and Douglas County, in 2000, 2001, we started the first rural drug courts in the state of Nevada. Since then, it's, that drug court has morphed into the felony DUI court. We have a mental health component. Other than here in Carson City, you have your own mental health court here, which is absolutely second to none in the state. I mean, you have to be proud of it and I'm glad that you're supporting it. So we also have a mat court. That's our heroin court. And that was the first one basically in the state of Nevada. So when you say Western Regional Drug Court, it's now Western Regional Specialty Courts because of all of its spinoffs. And go ahead and flash up the, I did not, I did not do, I don't have the technical expertise to actually make PowerPoints, but you do. Just go ahead and look at those and I'm not going to, excuse me, go through each and every one of them. Some of the, I would like to thank the court staff, the courts of Carson City. You know, you and we are really, really lucky. These things just don't happen. So I'd like to thank you for your interest and support of the courts. The staff is exceptional. I should know since I deal with six different courts in the state of Nevada and for 12 years did all the specialty courts in Roche County also. So exceptional people, especially in the, in the mental health court. I wish that I had them in all of the other courts. I can say we started in 2001 and September 17, 2001, with the five courts, Story, Carson, Douglas, Lyon, and Churchill. Now, we've added in 2003, I believe, Mineral County. Now we also do Pershing County, though Pershing County basically is its own entity. We just do the judicial stuff. So a couple of fun kind of things. You can go ahead and just flash the PowerPoint stuff. They can certainly read that if you're so inclined. And if you have questions over it, I'll certainly try to answer those. We're always worried now in the specialty court system, you know, what happened over COVID? I'm sure you folks are interested also. You know, what happened with the drugs of depression, with the opioids, with the alcohol? How has that changed? You'll be happy to know that COVID did not really change as far as drugs of choice in our groups. The opioid problem, it's an opioid record, problem throughout the country. However, our drugs of choice for opioids, which include heroin, are generally steady about 15%. And of course, you know, and if you don't, I'll tell you, the drug of choice remains methamphetamine. So the opioid crisis has not taken that over. The difference in drugs of choice during the COVID crisis is alcohol. We've increased over 100% of drugs of choice in alcohol. And make no mistake, alcohol is really, really hard to treat, really hard to treat. So we have, we have that going. You have some of the, some of the numbers up. A number that you may be interested in is the recidivism rate, which is a big deal. Nationwide, we're ahead of the curve. Our recidivism rate is about 22%, which means that we have a success rate of about 78%, which before drug courts, the counseling and regular substance abuse counseling had a success rate of about 30%. So thank you, courts. Thank you, folks. And thank the law enforcement. They're, they're really great in this, in this community. So if you have any, any questions that I may be able to answer, I'll be glad to. If not, I really do thank you for your interest. Please come down and, and observe us in the district court. Right now, myself, Judge Peter Breen, and Judge Deborah Schumacher are the judges. We rotate on a two-month basis at this point. We're all senior judges. Judge Breen started in 1994 in Roche County. So there's experience whether or not, that's wonderful. I don't, I'm not sure. Hopefully it is. Questions? Comments?
So can I ask on the recidivism numbers, when you determine that someone has come back in or not successful there, is that they have not re-offended just within the court system that we're handling or nationwide, that they haven't been rearrested or? So what does recidivism mean on, on these particular slides?
The very latest numbers that we have basically relates to the state of Nevada. However, I did a study for a huge project in, I don't know, eight years ago or so. Doesn't seem that long ago. And that, and the recidivism rate was determined throughout the nation. So if we had somebody who would offend in Idaho, we picked them up. And we did the rates on three-year rearrest and five-year rearrest. And actually, that study showed a recidivism rate that was even better than what I've stated.
Wonderful. Wonderful. Does anyone else? Supervisor Giomi?
On the, on those that do reoffend, do you, is there a common theme as to why they reoffend? I mean, is it, is it environmental? In other words, I know we've talked about, because Judge Armstrong has talked about it, having them in a safe environment during their program and, and how critical that is. So those that are graduates of the program and then reoffend, is there sort of a common theme that, that we could identify?
I really think there is. You know, it's, especially in the rural, rural Nevada. I mean, Carson City, it seems odd to me as considered rural, but yeah, Carson City has the advantage. At least it's larger. And that's one of the major, major problems is that we, they're, they're good when they go from us and many times, if not most times, they go back to the same environment. And until we can figure out a way to change the environment, which is difficult, becoming more difficult, I think, you know, we're always going to have that. You do have the advantage of being larger. Think of Hawthorne. What are you going to do there? You know? When, when, when we were all kids, I guess, Hawthorne was a big deal. You know, now they have 120 kids from the eighth grade through senior in high school. 120 folks, no foot jobs. Ah. But that was, you know, that's exactly, that's exactly the issue that we have.
Ms. Shutey?
Hi, thank you so much for what you do. And I am just such a proponent of specialty courts. Piggybacking on what Supervisor Giomi asked regarding the environment and participants in the court going back to the same environment, are there opportunities for the family or the peer group to participate in any of the, the court issues or opportunities or, I don't know what I'm trying to say here, but the programs?
The answer is yes.
Nice.
The, not so much from the court itself. I mean, they can come in and watch, but they, you know, they're not going to talk to the, to the judge about their, their issues. But from the treatment perspective, our treatment people have progressed from just a straight group setting, you know, tell me how you've been for the week, to actually having family interventions. We require also that to successfully complete the program, that they have to have gainful employment, I mean, like a real job. And they have to, if they don't have at least a high school education, they have to have that before they leave. And, and our treatment people all provide the means to do that. So, and our, and our peer groups, that's, that's one of the requirements also they have to do, so many peer groups for certain, and we test and test and test.
Well, thank you for having that family intervention and the peer groups and the focus on education because I really think it helps give the tools so people have a greater chance of success. So thank you.
Yeah, there's no, there's no question. That's, that's, that's the huge part of it.
So thank you so much.
Well, thank you, folks.
Judge Blake, we really appreciate your time and efforts for how long you've been working at this and I know there's more to do and so stick around another, you know, 40, 50 years or so. Yeah, he's like looking at me like that didn't work.
Talk to my wife about that.
Just say I've been recruited.
Thank you so much for what you do.
Thank you. Judge Armstrong?
All right. So I'm here to talk about misdemeanor treatment court and I don't want to, I'll just say this, you know, when I got on the bench, I had this whole rash of, and I was a prosecutor and defense attorney, but I got a different perspective when I was on the bench, a whole rash of young people, 18, 25. At that time, they were addicted, most, a lot of them addicted to opiates. Lots of it started with over prescribing of pain medications and progressed or what have you. We, you know, we're talking about the opioid crisis. And as Judge Blake said, we're kind of over the hump on that. We're kind of back to methamphetamine. The rest of the country may be on opiates, but we had the crisis here before anyone else, you know, in Washington or anyone else knew there was a crisis. But anyway, 18, 25, hopelessly addicted, overdosing, and too young for, you know, probably too young for felony resolutions of the cases where they could get in to see Judge Blake's court, but needed intervention and I was just at a loss. I just had a loss what to do with these people. Eventually, this wound up taking felonies, a lot of them going to prison. And so I had in my head that we needed to have a drug court separate from the mental health court because they have a different set of issues to address to help these younger offenders and intervene earlier and when they're in the adult system. Took a long time. The time, we're in the Great Recession, there was no money, there was no funding. This body helped out a lot and misdemeanor treatment court restarted six years ago. And I'm going to say, you know, you think about, as you, you know, as you progress in your career, what's, you know, what I'm done with this, what have I left behind? What have I done? That's going to matter. And I feel like misdemeanor treatment court is my life's work. You know, I really feel like this is something that I'm, that I'm just so proud of that I've done just for the help that is brought to so many people that we've had. And it's, it's something that, that gives meaning, that I think has meaning, real meaning, actual concrete results for the people and the families that pass through all these courts. But I feel like in this particular one, for me, I've seen it firsthand. And I always say, one successful participant is the tip of the iceberg because you get one successful participant, one graduate who does well, that not only impacts that person's life, it's their children, it's their families, it's their parents, it's everyone who cares about them, it's Sheriff Furlong, right? There's one less person, Sheriff Furlong, people are out arresting. It's, the ripple effects from one successful graduate are just really immeasurable. So misdemeanor treatment court's been operational for six years. It's a 12-month program because of misdemeanors, you don't have like a longer jurisdiction as the felony cases do. They're on alternative sentencing supervision with drug testing. They have to pay a fee for that. And we make sure that we randomly drug test each and every participant. They don't know when it's coming. They're not supposed to know when it's coming, they don't know how many offers they're going to be tested. That keeps them mindful of their recovery, right? When those, when the, you know, when the devil on the one shoulder is talking to you, come on, it's okay, let's go, you know, see our old friends here, you know, it's easy to say, well, I might be tested tomorrow, you know, and snaps them back to where they're supposed to be in the program. That kind of accountability is just, it's not a drug court without it. And we, alternative sentencing does a great job for us, such a great partner. Treatment providers are Community Council Center and they are our sole treatment provider. And Vitality Unlimited is our provider for inpatient. And that's been, those two partnerships, you know, it's all, you can't do it alone. You know, the judge can have all the motivation in the world, you know, but you can't do it alone without the partnerships. You know, you can't do it without them. And Community Council Center is invested. Vitality's been a great partner in this, and by extension, in this body, by working with Vitality and their inpatient program here has helped us. It's just, it's immeasurable. It really is because good, solid inpatient treatment is, is the way for certain people need to get traction into treatment. They're not going to do well on their own. They've got to be isolated. They've got to be, it's got to be intensive so they can, so that when they get out, they're ready to start the hard work it is of living out of, in the community and getting and staying sober and doing the hard work it takes to stay that way. It's a lot of work. It's very, very challenging. So, you know, the sentencing judge, whether it's Judge Lewis, whether it's me, or whether it's a judge from another jurisdiction with a Carson City resident, has got to agree. They've got to be sentence standing. So the sentencing judge has the final say as to whether someone is allowed to participate. It's also voluntary. It's important. Each and every participant, all these courts, has to volunteer. It's also voluntary, it's important, each and every participant, all these courts has to volunteer. We don't mandate it, they might not like the choice, you know, but it's their choice whether they do it. They might not like, well, you're going to go to jail, you're going to do the program, but they can make that choice, right? It's important that they have agency in this and they make their choices. So, but the judge has to agree that that's a suitable candidate. After the court kind of vets them and makes sure they're a good fit, the sentencing judge has to agree. Right now, we have about 24 participants, I think we've added about six since this slide was made. We are closer to 40, I think 40 to 45 is our sweet spot for what we can handle effectively. We've been way over, we've been way over 50 in the past. But with COVID, we just, we're getting the referrals and we're losing people. You know, the remote counsel, the remote court just wasn't as effective, it was very challenging. We're back to being in-person, unless somebody has to appear remotely. We're doing our best to keep people safe, I expect those numbers to increase. And in fact, like everything, right, like I think the whole city can sense, everything's kind of ramping up right now as we speak. And the courts are no different, and that number is going to get up close to 40 before we know it. So we've had 41 graduates, over that two-year period, we have four reoffenders. And I'm looking at that, and I'm saying, if, of the people that we take that are high-risk, high-needs, young adult offenders, without that intervention, if 40 didn't reoffend in that time, I'd be shocked. I would say 41, but you always got to account for that one person, right? For the population that we serve, I would say all of them, most likely, would have reoffended in the two-year period without that intervention. Because we don't take people who are just first timers, one timers. We take people that are young, but they have their high risk for reoffense. We have an objective test that we use to ensure that, and they have high needs for treatment. If you're not meeting those two criteria, those resources, intensive resources are better spent elsewhere. We have other options for those people. So for that population, four reoffends in two years out of 41, it's actually, I kind of was shocked to see that number, it's fantastic. I mean, anecdotally, I know that we're doing pretty well. But, and we've done the specialty court funding and policy committee that the Supreme Court put together, I'm a member of, Judge Blake's a member of, has done a, has commissioned a recidivism study. We came up with a definition, it's rearrest after three years. And we ran it against the graduates from our databases versus the state criminal justice database. And I don't recall the numbers off the top of my head, but Nevada and our courts in particular are ahead of the national average. We're doing a good job, and it's easy for me to say that, but I'm comfortable saying that because the data is showing us that. And this is what we keep track of in those two-year periods, we keep track of drug-free babies. I love that stat, we had four. And if you think about four drug-free babies, what the long-term impacts this community are? And then I think in my program, I don't know, right around 10. We're close to 10 drug-free babies in the six years we've had. You know, my wish is that we don't have any babies while people are in treatment, but that's just not reality, right? And those that we do, we're very proud of that stat. Because I think about the long-term, for this community, for those babies, for the parents, for everybody who cares about them, for the, you know, child and family services, for everything, it's just such a, it's just such a, you know, I love it when those babies come to court and I get my picture with them, I get to see them, you know, because it's just, it's really something to be proud of. So I kind of told you what the, who's going to be in the program. It's offenders that meet, I don't care if they're first offenders, if they're 10th offenders, if they're high-risk, high-needs, they meet our criteria and they're suitable for treatment, we're going to take them. If you're older than 25, we'll take you. That's our focus, but we don't exclude anybody who needs us. Lots of drug charges, misdemeanor drug charges, paraphernalia, but it's not limited to that. It's property crimes, it's check crimes, it's sometimes violent crimes, batteries and domestic violence, where, you know, 90% of all those cases are drug and alcohol related or involved. And so if you're high-risk, high-needs, and you have a misdemeanor violent crime, you meet our criteria, we'll take you. You give them treatment, you address the trauma, you would take this, you take the, you get them clean and sober, that stuff goes away. And then everyone's got to agree, we have a team. And we'll get into that later, who the team is, and the whole team meets. And we talk about whether it's a suitable candidate, if they are, we'll take them. That's misdemeanor treatment court, it's for that, it's that step for either the misdemeanor-level offender or the young person who maybe is an option for the DEA, they need treatment, they need intervention, but they really don't want to hang the risk of felony on a young person, they can send them to me and we'll do our best to take care of them. I'm going to finish up at the end, we have some other things we want to talk about. This is just kind of the brief overview of misdemeanor treatment courts before I hand it off to Judge Lewis. Any misdemeanor treatment court specific questions? I'll take some general questions at the end if you have any.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
I don't see any questions. Judge Lewis? Oh, we're going to switch the order, sure. Juvenile drug court, absolutely.
Here, go forward to. Sorry, this is Master Okazie.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Kimberly Okazie, I'm the special master, juvenile special master here in Carson City. And I served the First Judicial District Court, and that also includes Story County as well. First of all, thank you for allowing me to be here and this opportunity to present. I think your support of these specialty courts sends a really strong message to our community and to the juveniles and families that we all serve. So I appreciate the opportunity. So juvenile drug court started 22 years ago with our special master Dave Nelson. Master Nelson still serves in juvenile court. He covers for me, and he also does our child support. So I would be remiss if I didn't say his name, because he did start this program. And then, of course, now Judge Lewis was a master and had that program for a while. And I've had big shoes to fill with both of those people. And I continue to do it six years later, which is kind of a strange thing for me to say, because I can't believe it's been six years. But I love what I do and I appreciate the opportunity to have a juvenile drug court. You can kind of read here on the slide, and a lot of what you've already heard applies to juvenile or juvenile court. Couple of things I want to emphasize is, I know we have the treatment provider here, but there's more than that to these specialty courts. It really is a team approach. It includes the judicial officer, our treatment providers, the district attorney's office. In our court, the public defender's office serves in that role as well. And it includes our juvenile probation officers. And I always tell the parent and the child, you're part of that team as well, because they really are. If we don't have their buy-in, we're just not going to have a successful outcome, is the bottom line. And I believe that what Judge Armstrong indicated earlier, you know, to be able to make a change in someone's life is just a huge impact and it ripples down. But without having that family buy-in and having the ability to change the environment that the child's in, it's just going to, may be less impactful. Sometimes kids amaze you, though, that kid may have literally no one. I mean, literally no one except for us as a team supporting them. I've had situations where the kid's the only one that shows up, can't get mom to show up, can't, don't know where mom is. So there's issues like that, and yet this kiddo perseveres. We had just one recently that I can think of, and just an amazing young, young child, human being. And yet she was extremely successful and continues to be successful after her graduation from our program. The other thing I wanted to mention is with COVID, admittedly so, we shut down for a minute, not having the kiddos come into court until we got up and running with our virtual platform. The kids still kept going to counseling and groups in the way that they could, getting things up and running in virtual life. And I would check in with the team periodically, and they started telling me, Judge, the kids want to come back. They, even if it's on a virtual platform, they need this structure. And my heart like grew and pounded, and I was so happy to hear that, because I thought, gosh, they're having a good time, right? Not having to necessarily be accountable in the court setting. But no, they wanted it and they wanted to be there. So I thought it's important for you guys to hear that, that we're not, I mean, like Judge Armstrong said, this is a voluntary program, but at the end of the day, the kids know that there's a huge benefit to it and they want to participate. We do have smaller numbers right now, we're at about, I think we're about eight right now. And we shoot for 15, and I'm sure we're going to start growing as we are currently growing towards that number. But it's been really interesting to see that the smaller number, how intimate that particular group has become with each other. Even online, where I've given them the ability to disconnect from that platform, they started staying and supporting each other. We had one juvenile step up and say, Judge, do you mind if I stay? I want to be here and support my other juveniles that are going through this. And I, oh, absolutely, of course. And if, seriously, from that day on, even though that particular leader isn't with us right now, all of them stay. And it's kind of nice to see, I mean, you can give them guidance to do that, but when they do it themselves amongst each other, it's just really powerful. I also want to reiterate something that Judge Armstrong mentioned as well, the ripple effect. When someone is in another specialty court, especially adult, an adult, and that adult crosses over to our child welfare cases, it is a huge impact in that child welfare case. And the potential for a positive resolution for reunification between the child and the parent really grows greatly. And I know, sitting there on the bench, when I hear that they're in another specialty court, I'm cheering and doing flips and, of course, verbally encouraging them to stay in that program. When we have that, we have greater success of getting that child back home. So each of these specialty courts has an impact throughout our communities. With that, I may have to leave before pictures, and I greatly apologize for that, but my calendar starts in five minutes. So if there's any questions, I'll leave with that.
I don't see any questions, so thank you so very much and do great work today.
Thank you. You all take care.
Thank you. Okay, Judge Lewis?
All right, good morning and thank you all for letting me be here. I think I've met most of you during the course of the last couple of years, and some of you have actually come to observe the program, and I'm tremendously grateful for that. As Judge Armstrong mentioned earlier, I too have had experiences both as a defense attorney, a prosecutor, and as a judge. And fortunately, I had the opportunity to participate in all of our specialty court programs at one point in time, either as a prosecutor or a master, and now as a judge in the mental health court. And I'm proud, I guess, to be a Carson City resident in terms of how we handle things. I'm assuming everybody on the board feels the same way. I'm particularly proud of what we do in the court system and the forward-thinking of the judicial officers and leaders who established our programs. It's more significant than I can tell you. Back in 2004 or so, Judge Tatro was motivated to start the mental health court program. And Sheila Leslie was heavily involved at that point in time. And she worked with Judge Tatro in order to get funding, because it was always, you know, you're always struggling for grant money to support these programs. And you know that they do valuable things for the community, but it's hard to sustain them long-term. And when you're trying to approach county commissioners or the board of supervisors to say, hey, we need money for this, you know, there's so many needs, it's hard to justify that. And so back in 2005, because of the direction that specialty courts were going, we were able to get a specific line item budget from the legislature that supports our program. And there will be some information in one of the later slides that shows that, but it was $100,000 that was given to Carson City to support mental health court. And that's huge. And we use that money to support a case manager for our program from the rural clinics and also to support some ancillary services that address critical needs for our program, like transportation, drug testing, I'm trying to think of everything, but educational issues, GED, whatever the cost might be, even transportation to Vitality, also to address housing, and there's a piece that we'll talk about in a few moments. But I wanted to kind of introduce and get things rolling with that. I think I'm probably the luckiest person to preside over the mental health court, because, you know, when you talk about the ripple effect, I think that program is the very example of what that is. You know, we end up with people who, maybe they had a mental health issue to begin with, maybe they didn't, maybe it got brought on by substance abuse. But one way or another, we've got somebody with a significant mental health problem that's causing them to be involved in the criminal system. Oftentimes, probably the majority of the cases, it's also causing them to be involved in drug use, which just exacerbates the problem. Oftentimes, they think it's better than using the medications that might help sustain them, but it's not, and it's leading to further criminal activity. And so the biggest problem we have with our people who become involved in the mental health court prior to their involvement with us is that they can't stay on track with therapy medications, they're homeless often, they're not following the rules at home, if they are living at home, most of them are, you know, we're dealing with adults. So they may not be living at home because they've created issues, they come into the system. Our most team, which I want to speak about, I mean, again, that's another forward-thinking thing that the sheriff came up with, they deal with them on a regular basis. They come into the jail on a regular basis. I can't tell you how many people we have incarcerated on a regular basis who are in our jail, in our special needs areas, and they have mental health issues and trying to get them treated or stabilized before they can be released. Sometimes they may or may not be competent or even into our program. That's just not where they're intended to be. So the fact that we have this program, the fact that we can serve people with these types of needs is huge. The biggest challenge is, the program is voluntary. So if they choose not to come into the program, then we definitely have a struggle. But the structure of the program, the fact that you're seeing a judge every week, the fact that you're in counseling for substance abuse and we're seeing a mental health therapist, which most of our people at some point in time, were already involved with rural clinics, who is our local provider that we use. But they may or may not stay connected to rural clinics, because, you know, again, there's no consistency there. So we try to build in that consistency with the structure that we have, the supervision that we have, the Department of Alternative Sentencing, who monitors them on a regular basis. We try to put those things in place, seeing the judge each week, to show accountability. It just strengthens the program. And I've seen, the turnaround I've seen in the people is significant. I mean, we've had people who were right there at the door of going to prison because of what's happened. They graduate our program, they complete probation successfully, they're working, everything's on track, they complete their education, they obtain housing. The city has been a big part of that too, and Judge Armstrong's going to address that shortly. But, you know, I look around, as I'm sure you all do, when you travel to different locations, sometimes within the state and sometimes outside of the state, where you've got tent cities and homeless people that are right there. And, you know, Judge Tatro and I were having that conversation recently of what contributes to that. So much of it, I think, is unmet mental health needs, combined substance abuse, the homelessness, the cycle that we have. And, you know, I want to talk about that, because there's a slide that we'll get into that talks about the approach of specialty courts and what happens with that cycle of addiction unless there's intervention by the specialty courts. And, you know, Judge Blake was here, and Judge Armstrong and I, and Master Okazie, there's traditional ways that these types of cases have been handled, where somebody offends, commits a crime, there's substance abuse involved. You see the judge after you go into jail, and you may or may not be ordered to have some conditions to complete, including treatment. But unless there is the structure that a participant or a person might need, they're not necessarily going to complete that. And again, those types of things are voluntary. I mean, as a sentencing judge in any other case, I can order what I think is appropriate based upon the person appearing before me and the things that I see. But whether or not they're going to do it, again, it's a choice. And so our alternative is, do I just incarcerate that person? We pay for that as a community. What are our options here? Our best option is the specialty court programs and using them in the right cases. So I wanted to go through the numbers that are provided to you right now. Our program's been operational for 16 years, I think that's just so significant. And it's one of the best programs I've seen, and I think Judge Blake for even acknowledging and highlighting that. Our program length is approximately 12 to 24 months. We have had people in there for three years. It just depends on what the issues are, and if there's a relapse or something like that, you know, we address those, and we want that to happen within the program so that we can build strength in that person's ability to recover. One of the other things I wanted to talk about is we're a multi-jurisdictional program. We have people who are sent to us from the Douglas County Courts, obviously from Story County, we're part of the First Judicial District, but from other courts as well. And as you might all understand, our population's pretty transient. I mean, we can have residents here who commit a crime in Douglas County or Lyon County or Reno, and if they live here, they need the supports and structure here because they live here. Or if they live in another jurisdiction, but they commit the crime here, they may start off here. We have some participants that we've had where the crime was committed here, but they live in Reno, so we've transferred them to the Reno Drug Court Program. So that happens as well, but it takes time to do that, because, you know, because, you know, you have to establish certain baseline things before you can transfer somebody. So I wanted to make sure that I addressed that. And part of that multi-jurisdictional approach, I think, was another big reason why we were able to get the legislative funding that we did. And so, I think that's significant. There's, there's clear statutory authority for the program. And our participant numbers, on the slide, it says we've got 12. Right now, we have 19 active cases in our program, so our numbers have grown a little bit. And I want to say, I had, Elizabeth had provided me some information because I also present before our CIT group, the crisis intervention training. And we had 48 cases that were open from 20, the beginning of 2020 to the end of 2020. And not everybody would have stayed with us necessarily throughout the course of the year for different reasons, but we'd like to keep our numbers somewhere right around that. 30 to 35 is probably the sweet spot range. We can go up to 50, but that creates some capacity issues for our therapists at rural clinics and some of the other things that we have going. So that's, that's where we try to keep things. We've had 23 graduates since 2019. One reoffender, it says. I think we've had approximately seven reoffenders since 2017. At least, that's some paperwork that I, or some information that I had from our Department of Alternative Sentencing, and two drug-free babies born since 2017. And so, that's significant as well. We currently have a participant in our program who is staying at City of Refuge, has her baby, she's completing her education, she came out of the juvenile system. She's trying to be a parent, she's just doing therapy by Zoom from the program. And, you know, our, our partners that we work with, the different agencies, are just, it's, it's the best thing we could ask for. City of Refuge has been a great partner, Step Two, when we need them. And Vitality is something we rely on significantly when we need inpatient treatment as soon as they come out of the jail. So if we can't handle them in an outpatient basis, that's where we need to send them. So I'm tremendously grateful for those partnerships and the support that we've received in that respect. So I'll move to the next slide. I did, I did want to talk about recidivism a little bit. You know, I think mental health court can be one of the bigger challenges in terms of recidivism. To, to have our Department of Alternative Sentencing to the extent that they can track it in the Carson City and Nevada area, say that there's been about seven since 2017. I think that's pretty important and pretty significant. It's hard to keep the mental health participants on track and to not reoffend once they finish their program. The best thing we do is create the supports and the relationships that they have with their therapists and treatment providers, and none of that goes away just because they graduate. But it's definitely a challenging population because this slide shows you the different types of mental health issues that we address. And so, you know, at any given time, maintaining that consistency of medication and all of that can be a challenge. But the one thing I do want to say is, while they're in the program for the two years, the 18 months, up to three years that they could be in the program, the lack of law enforcement contact, the lack of, you know, other agency issues, it's huge. It really is. From a dollars and cents standpoint, I think even the sheriff's office would tell you that. So it lists the, the different mental health disorders that we work with. It has to be a treatable mental health issue. It can't be something, we have had people in our program with fetal alcohol syndrome. Depends on how significant it is because we want to be able to make sure that they can follow directions and do what we need them to do. We don't want to set anybody up to fail, and we want to provide as many supports as we can. So that's, that's our goal. And again, like Judge Armstrong mentioned, we're looking at that high-risk, high-needs issue. We do address mental health people, you know, throughout the course of the rest of my calendar, but if their issues or their needs aren't significant, and I can simply refer them to a mental health assessment and to continued treatment, and they comply, then they don't need to be in the program. It's where they struggle with those issues that the program's most helpful. And, you know, we, we take a holistic approach when we're doing these types of programs. As Master O'Keesey mentioned, we work together in teams. Your defense attorney abandons their traditional role. The prosecutor abandons their traditional role. You're working together to see what's in the best interest of this person, what's in the best interest of our community. We rely significantly on our treatment providers. We've got Dr. Jo Mckellstrom, who works with the mental health court to identify what the mental health issue is, whether or not we can address it, whether or not they meet our program criteria. We work with our substance abuse providers. Mary Bryan works with us, coordinates that treatment aspect in terms of substance abuse. And then we have the rural clinics coordinator as well, who assists with all the mental health aspects, as well as connecting people to education, trying to get disability benefits in place, those types of things that can reimburse the, the things that we're trying to take care of. And they also are responsible to pay for their supervision by the Department of Alternative Sentencing. They either do that by paying a monthly fee or by doing community service. So that community service also helps get them sometimes a job. We've had people get hired by Salvation Army just because of the community service that they were doing. So I think those things are really important. We can go to the next couple of slides, I think. The specialty court teams, as I mentioned, that lists all of our partners in the various programs. The psychologist is particular to mental health court, but as it concerns the other programs, I think it, it covers pretty much everything. We, we oftentimes have the most teams show up to our staffing and, and address any significant cases that they might have or somebody that we're working with that they've dealt with on a regular basis. All of these programs are evidence-based programs. Cody, we can go to the next slide if you want. Evidence-based programs, which is really important. The, the National Drug Court Association, they provide training on an annual basis. We try to participate every other year or so more if we need to, just to make sure that everybody stays up to date on training and so that we're addressing cases from the right standpoint and trying to provide the best services that we can and have the most successful outcomes. And, and our funding is based upon us doing those things. So that's, I think, how we measure what we're doing, the success, the success of it and the recidivism, and try and address those issues. So intensive supervision is, is really important. Without that, I don't think we would get anywhere either. So hats off to our Department of Alternative Sentencing too because they visit our people on a weekly basis, make sure they're on track. They, they do more than that, though. They build a relationship with them the same way we do in court. And so, that, that creates that additional measure of accountability that helps us succeed. It's a non-adversarial process. You know, we, we do address sanctions and incentives based upon behavior in the programs and how things are going. Sometimes the incentive is simply applause when you've accomplished so many days of sobriety or whatever it might be. But we also do provide incentives, and, and part of the ancillary funding I have goes to help with any number of things. It could include haircuts, an oil change for your vehicle, tires for a bicycle, whatever it might be that that participant might need. We try to address those things too when they're doing a really good job and keeping everything on track. If we could go to the next slide. This, this kind of shows you, I think, the traditional way that cases have been handled, I think that most people are familiar with. You know, a crime's committed, a person comes to court, they're, well, they're typically incarcerated, come to court and may be incarcerated again after they see the judge. Treatment may or not, may not be recommended, they may or may not engage. Substance abuse continues and nothing changes. We just keep doing the same thing over and over again. And I can tell you, and I'm sure the same for Judge Armstrong, when I'm dealing with somebody who ends up in my mental health court, a lot of times by the time they end up in the program, I've got three or four files for them just based upon arrests that took place in the last six months. So it's, it's a big deal that we're doing things differently. And the next slide addresses the specialty court goals. It's all been covered, so I, I don't want to, I don't want to repeat everything, but, but really, we want to connect the participants to long-term engagement in the pro-social goals of, you know, substance, addressing their substance use, addressing their mental health. When, when they graduate from the program and they can tell me that without this program, I wouldn't be where I am today, I'm going to continue meeting with my therapist on a regular basis, I'm going to continue going to AA and A meetings and working with my treatment provider. That's, that's what I want to see. They, I've had probably, just since I've been on, in the court, doing mental health court, I've had four people that have graduated while I've been there who have come back and visited our program, said hi to the participants, said hi to the team members to let us know how they're doing. And so, that's a big deal. That's a big deal. And we know they're on track because they come and show us. Do you have any questions? Anything I can answer?
Supervisor Giomi?
Yes, thank you. Judge Lewis, do you, do you find that, that the success of the program continues to breed success? In other words, the, the, the successful participants coming back? And i- is it encouraging for the people who are just entering the program to know that they're part of a successful program, I guess? Does that?
I, I think that's-
Do you find that it's kind of self-supporting in that way with the new participants? Do they find encouragement?
I think that's important. I think, I think when Supervisor White was there, we also had a graduation of somebody who had been in the program for a long time. And, you know, as, as time goes by and you're in the program, we have phases. So when a person first starts coming, they're seeing us weekly. And then after they've completed maybe three to six months, it'll be bi-weekly, and then they'll start, start coming on a monthly basis. And so, you may not see that person. But when we have a graduation, I have that person stand up and speak. I have them talk about, you know, where were they at when they first started with the program? Where are they at now? You know, what, what's their, what's their, their plan to stay clean and sober? And we talk about all those things. And, and I think that's one of the more impactful things that can happen because they discuss, you know, if it wasn't for the structure of this program, if it wasn't for my therapist, if it wasn't for the counseling, if it wasn't for me having to do these exercises where I think about, why do I keep engaging in substance abuse? Is it my associations? Is it my depression? Is it, what are the things that caused me to be here? I think those are the most significant things. And when our participants, our newer participants are hearing from those individuals and where they started from, they're like, well, if that person did it, I can do it. Yeah, it's a big deal.
I guess for everyone in the program, there has to be that aha moment where things connect for them. Because if they don't, they're going to be one of those people that don't-
Right.
That probably reoffend. But, but that, that moment is probably different for everybody. So I guess it's probably critical that you offer plenty of opportunities through the broad breadth of treatment that you provide for them to realize that moment, right? To, to, to get over that hump.
Yeah, that, that's very true and, and, and very insightful. And, and, and that's, that's part of the coming to court each week, getting to know your participants. The Department of Alternative Sentencing gets to know the participants, all of our treatment providers do too. So when we're staffing these things each week, we're trying to figure out, okay, why did this happen? Why did that happen? Sometimes we'll end up with people who get dilute tests, and we're trying to figure out, okay, but that didn't happen for a while. So why are we in this situation now? Is it a medical issue or are they trying to hide something from us? We try to work through those things. And we, we use jail as a sanction when we have to, but we try to avoid that. So we'll try to do essays, we'll try to do additional counseling, we'll try to do other things. But if we get to a point with someone where we feel like we're just reaching resistance and we're not, we're not accomplishing what we want, then we'll use jail too. We'll try to use all of our different tools in our toolbox to address the situation and get them over the hump. We've even had, you know, as, as Supervisor Shutey asked about family issues. You know, we're typically dealing with the participant, but we recognize that there are family issues. And we've had, you know, a number of our participants who are married or have relationships with somebody who's drug-using. And so, we've even gone to the point of saying, you can't have contact with that person unless that person's going to come to counseling and/or be subject to testing. And that created some resistance. And we work through that and work through that and work through that. And fortunately, we've been able to get most of our people over that hump where they're either putting distance in that relationship or that person has come along and said, yes, I'll agree to submit to testing and go to counseling and take care of those issues because-
Well, when you list those teams, I think that, that speaks directly to, when you list the number of people that are participants in this-
Yeah.
What you're saying there speaks directly to that because that, somewhere along that continuum is where you really, someone's going to impact them, hopefully.
Right.
And, and that's why it's so critical to have the team that you have. So thank you for your work.
And, and the, well, thank you for recognizing that. And, and all those team members recognize the validity of what we're doing too. And, and I wish it was something that we could offer for everybody that we see. It just doesn't seem to work that way, but it's, it's the most successful. Thank you.
Supervisor White?
Thank you. Yeah, I can speak a little bit on, on your question there, Supervisor Giomi. In my brief time that I spent in the mental health and the drug courts over with the Department of Alternative Sentencing, going on a ride-along and, and observing these, these folks in their homes, sitting there in the court, and specifically during that graduation, it is very obvious that the participants are a big part of that team as well because they have created a peer group. When you sit there and observe these folks come to the microphone, which is pretty hard for a lot of people to do, you can see the rest of the group move into emotional angst when this person is probably being chastised a little bit. And during that graduation, I could tell you that was an emotional situation for the entire room. So, yeah, that's a, the, the peer group, the camaraderie that, that builds amongst those people, helping one another is pretty amazing.
Right, that's one of the requirements is when we have our participants at the program, and COVID made that challenging to some extent. So what we did was we split up our numbers and we had them come in shifts, or we would have one person come in at a time. And so, that makes that more challenging. But for the most part, they all come in as a group. Each person approaches the microphone to talk to the judge. And, and that's not an easy task. I mean, it's not easy to come up here and talk to all of you either. You guys, a little bit intimidating at times. But it's definitely intimidating for our participants, you know? Especially if they have issues that they need to work through or talk about. And we want honesty, that's, that's a critical part of the program. So that's challenging. And, and they all sit there and they all watch each other and they all support each other. But at the same time, outside of that, they're not supposed to have contact with each other either because we want to keep them on track and doing what they're supposed to be doing, so.
Thank you, Judge Lewis. Really appreciate your-
Absolutely.
-time and information.
I would, I would welcome any of you to come back and watch or come and observe. It's, it's fantastic. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Judge Armstrong?
All right. So I'm going to keep it brief. And I hear that every day in court, and it's never happens, but I promise you. We're going to talk about the funding, we're going to talk about the dollars, the dollars and the funding should have been done earlier. We want to finish with the good human stuff, not the dollars. But I think it's important. I want to recognize, I think it's important to recognize the support that allows all this to happen. And, you know, we're funded from court fees. We get allocations from the legislature. We get allocations from Supreme Court through legislature and through court fees. And this body, you know, Health Human Services, you know, with the indigent funding, helps with the housing. And, you know, the CC Sheriff's thing, I think, is too important not to talk about. It is, it is a work in progress, and it is on the upswing, and it is, it is, we're getting there. We started this program with the iteration we have now at the Sunrise House on July 1, 2020. I cannot think of a worse time to start a new project with, with the whole people in the house living together than July 1 of 2020. Maybe, you know, maybe August 1 of 2020, I don't know. But anyway, mid-2020 was not a good time. And we had some bumps in the road, we had some struggles, but we're getting full. We're getting some supervision in the house. We're building the partnership, the working relationship with both Health Human Services and, and the provider of the home. And, you know, I'm going to meet with her on Monday. We're going to just talk and make sure that we're on the same page, how things are going. That support, the partnerships with the city, the partnerships with Vitality, the partnerships with community council center, the partnership with the sheriff department, the DA's office, Alternative Sentencing. It is a team. There's the team that meets every week that I gotta go talk to here in about five minutes and 10 minutes after the photos. But it's the team, the broader team, that we are all a part of that really makes it work. And I could not be more in support of the Sober Housing Assistance Act or, or a program that we have. I'm going to answer one of Supervisor Giomi's questions in a slightly different way, talking about relapse and what is it, and was there a common theme? There's a lot of social science evidence in this kind of stuff. This stuff's been studied since they've started social sciences, right? But one of the things that really resonated with me that seems to have a lot of statistical validity is the idea that the person in the program needs to substitute their antisocial contacts with pro-social contacts. If they don't make that transfer, whether, and it's, if it's, if the family's antisocial and remains so, they've got to set boundaries, right? It's about, it's about, and they've got to substitute those contacts they had with new pro-social contacts. People sober, people supportive of their sobriety. And if you do that, that is the single biggest indicator for long-term success. That's one of the reasons why 12-step, 12-step works so well. Because there, every time they go to a meeting, there's a supportive community, pro- Because there, every time they go to a meeting, there's a supportive community, pro-social community for them to embrace. And they can get some meaning in giving back and maybe kind of mentor themselves, that sort of thing. So that's what we're trying to do. It's bigger than just getting clean off drugs and alcohol. It's about, it's about substituting this. And if you don't have a safe place to go, a sober place to live, when you're, when you're in a very fragile early stages of treatment, your chances of actually succeeding, the stack is decked, the deck is stacked against you in a way that is really hard to imagine. Like I said, it's a work in progress. I appreciate this board's support of that program. I support the program. We're going to make it as good as it can be. I promise you, I will not stop trying to make it as good as it can be with the partners that we have. And I think everyone's got the same goal. So we're gonna, we're gonna get out of here. You guys have a lot of work to do today and I appreciate you indulging us. If you have any last questions for me, broad questions, anything, I'm, I'm here for you. If not, you guys can get on to your other work.
Thank you so much. Supervisor White, you have a question?
Yes, thank you. A couple of times today, meth has been mentioned as the front-running issue. What do, do you have a sense in what the source of that meth is? Are they making it locally? Is it coming across the border?
You know, I don't know.
What do we, what do we need to do to get in front of that?
I don't know. You know, supply, the, dealing with the supply side of the drug problem is outside of my pay grade, right? I mean-
Okay.
I have not seen, I'll say this, I have not seen a home lab arrest in Carson City in a very long time. Now, what's going on in the rural counties, I don't know, you know? But I think the, the, I think the general knowledge is it's, it's cartel-based and it's coming, it's coming from, um, the cartels are important. But it can be, I mean, there could be labs here, I, I don't know, but I haven't seen any evidence of that. You know, honestly Supervisor, as far as that goes, better, better ask the sheriff on that one, right? For me, you know, I don't care where they're getting it, I want them to stop using it. I'm all about the demand side of the things, right? I gotta reduce demand. I gotta reduce demand in my, for my people and for their families and for the people that care about them. And if we reduce the demand, you know, either way, if you can find an effective way to reduce supply, that helps. But you don't reduce the demand, it's, it's, they gotta work together, in my opinion. I'm on the demand side and I'm doing the best I can to address that. The rest of it is, like I said, better, the sheriff probably has better ideas of what's, what's going on. It ebbs and flows, drugs of choice, what we're getting, what we're seeing, what's being used, you know, it changes and it, and it flows. What accounts for that? I just don't know. And the people I talk to don't know, right? They don't know where, they, they know where they're buying their stuff or they're getting their stuff, but they don't know who's selling to them. They don't, you know, they, it's not, you know, it's a bigger, it's a bigger issue than what I'm trying to address as the demand side. So I wish I had a better answer for you, but it's not my, not my bailiwick.
Supervisor Giomi?
You know, I would just add that I'm 100% behind you on the demand side because regardless of what the abused drug is, they will find a drug to abuse if, if you are not addressing the demand side of it. I mean, if, if meth dries up, they'll go to heroin. I mean, if heroin dries up, they'll go to opioids. If opioids dry, dry up, they'll go to alcohol. And so I think it's just critical that the program that you have addresses the user and why they use. And I just, I can't compliment you enough for all of you for that part of it. Because to me, that's, you know, I've, I've dealt with abuse in my family and abusers will abuse until you can address the problem of that abuse. So.
I appreciate that. And that's what we are best equipped to address. And that's what we're trying to do. And we change it. You know, the methods and the techniques and it, it changes as the science, as the, as we, as we are reflective. And we look at what we're doing and we, we, we all do that. We're all reflect, you know, the national organization looks at this, the state organization does, and individual courts, we meet. What's working, what's not working? What can we do better? We're always striving to do better. Because if we do better, our community is better and that's really what it's all about.
Okay. What we're gonna do is go ahead and go down on the, on the front up here. We're gonna do a picture. And then I'll go ahead and do the rest of the proclamations even down there for the next round so that we can move along.
Thank you. Have a good day.
And we're, we're, we're doing love law. That one's a big deal. Fallon has a-
So are you ready, Hope? Are you ready? I'm gonna stay right here because then I'll just read the proclamation. They can come up, get their picture. All right, we're gonna move on to Agenda Item 7B, which is the proclamation for historic preservation. And then Ms. Sullivan will do the presentations and the, for the awards and the picture. So whereas historic preservation and archaeological awareness are effective tools for managing growth and sustainable development, revitalizing neighborhoods, fostering local pride and maintaining community character while enhancing livability. And whereas it is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and the contributions made by the dedicated individuals in helping to preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that has shaped us as people. Now therefore, I Lori Bagwell, Mayor of Carson City, Nevada, do proclaim May 2021 as Historic Preservation and Archaeological Awareness Month and call upon the people of Carson City to join their fellow citizens across Nevada in recognizing and participating in this special observance. Ms. Sullivan, do you have some further? Oh, Mr. Drews, are you gonna start it off?
I'll start it off. Thank you, Mayor Bagwell and, and Supervisors. We're here once again to celebrate Historic Preservation and Archaeological Preservation Month. We join with the state and the nation in doing that. The month of May is, is the month that, that we celebrate historic preservation. Carson City has done an incredible job. I mean, this, this community has done a whole lot to preserve its history. It's what Nevada is. And I think we deserve a lot of recognition for it.
I do too.
One of the ways we're celebrating it again this year, I think it's our 12th year, is with the scavenger hunt. This year, our theme is foundations. This Carson City's history is pretty much built on sandstone, brick and concrete that holds our buildings. The scavenger hunt is, if you go to Community Development, they have the flyers that you can take around. If you go to carson.org/hunt, there's an online version this year, which is kind of exciting. Kolo News had a special feature last night. If you go to Kolo, you can access the website from them as well. So we're looking forward to good participation there. Burke and Fox has once again provided a lunch to the winners, so-
Phenomenal.
Some good incentive there.
Great.
With that, we'd like to do our annual Historic Preservation Award. This year's award goes to Visit Carson City and their partners who were instrumental in fabricating and installing the-
The Carson Trail.
The new markers along the Carson Trail. So with that, I'd like to introduce David Hill. I think he has about a half an hour-
Oh, let me have that. We'll give it to him. We'll do this with the pictures. That has to be in the picture, right?
Don't give David a half an hour.
I'm not gonna.
Hey, I, I heard that. I, I cut it down to like 25 minutes for all of you.
You're out of timer.
And I had to cut my own chair out as well. You know, how fair is that?
So David, if you'd make a few remarks-
Yeah, no, I, I'll just say this, for the record, Dave, Dave Peterson with Visit Carson City, you know, great things start with, with an idea. And for the Kit Carson Trail markers, that idea was born out of a conversation with Mr. Bob Thrower two winters ago, believe it or not. He came in, I was sort of lamenting this idea of having to contact 40 different property owners to figure out if they would like to have yet another sign put up in, in their respective yards. And Bob said, well, have you thought about carriage stones? And I said, carriage what? You know, and then after a little bit of an explanation, he, he explained to me what carriage stones were. And I guess the idea you could say was, was sort of planted at that point and it, and it really began this transformation and reimagination of the Kit Carson Trail at that point. So this was an amazing collaboration with several different agencies. And, and I think to, to, that's an understatement, you know? So I want to thank you all as the RDA for the funding for this project. I, I want to thank Silver State Industries for the amazing fabrication work that they did on those markers. And just to remind everybody as well that, you know, they came from the same quarry that built a lot of those buildings on the Kit Carson Trail. So that, that was fantastic. And Carson City Public Works and the Concrete Street Crew, these guys were, were really, really awesome. They did color-coordinated concrete platforms that the markers are, are set into. And you have to remember, these markers are like 135 to 150 something pounds. They're, they're huge. And they, they just did a beautiful job with that. So Community Development was awesome as well. They let us repurpose the medallions that are in the markers from the concrete that was previously taken up. And Silver State Industries polished those and, and cleaned those all up for us as well. And to Historic Resources Commission, you know, thank you for approving this project. And, and the Chair, Chair Drews, he was kind enough to come out there and we, as we were trying to figure out where should we put these markers, you know, we have to leave these strips so you can mow around them. And he was helping us on several mornings to, to, to get them into place. So the Carson City Historical Society, huge thanks to them. They helped us identify the 48 spots that you see now on the, on the trail and helped us with the dates and the narrative, you know, information as well for each of those locations. And then I also want to thank State Lands. So they helped me with these different authorizations that I didn't know anything about. And there are not one, but two of those for the state, state buildings. So they were great in, in, in helping me through that process as well. And thanks to, to my Chair and the CTA Board for sort of letting me run with this, this crazy idea. And I think most importantly, I really want to thank my team. They really worked tirelessly, like 15 months, not just on the design of the markers, but the brochures, the sort of redoing of our website with 360-degree video. We shot a bunch of really cool video and pictures. And, and so again, I'm super proud to have been a part of a wonderful project that preserves a living, breathing piece of Carson City's history, not only for our visitors, but I think our residents have really enjoyed this as well. So thank you.
Well, thank you so much. Well, Mike, are you gonna say something or did you wanna just come on up and get your picture taken? You have to have proof that you got an award. Oh my gosh. Yeah, how are you? I think people don't realize how much can be done at Silver State Industries outside. Let's check this out. Just check this out. Oh, come on in. Come on in. Let's get a good pic. Check it out.
Could be approved then?
Oh, yeah, you asked for it. Oh, congratulations.
One thing I do want to say, we wouldn't have been able to complete this without the support of Stacy. She's part of our board and he, he really spearheaded it and kept us on track to get this project done. And so-
Let's go. We had it on the books.
Yeah. This is one of our first, uh, our first big sort of charges for David and his team.
Major undertaking. Good job. Really excited. It's a-
They look great.
They do. Nothing better for me than history. So thank you all so very much. And we look forward to the, the next step. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, you guys. We appreciate it.
So nice. Thank you so much.
Good to see you again.
Good to see you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Perfect. Yes, yes, yes. Great to meet you.
So I had to push it out.
Oh, absolutely. I'm worried. Thank you.
Thank you. You guys did a great job. Thank you. We have two more for short?
Yep. Three?
Three more?
Three, but there isn't any, uh, it's just a proclamation read and a picture. I'm gonna try to keep it to that. People are happy to be here, you know? I understand. So I just think I wanted to, that's what I was thinking as well, so I haven't said anything.
I guess we'll see you next Friday.
I do, yeah.
Oh, yes. I'm so excited to do that.
Yeah. Did you miss something by the time?
Okay.
What time is that? Is that the same day?
Okay. We're gonna go ahead and move on to Agenda Item 7C, which is a proclamation to designate the May 16th through the 23rd as the National Public Works Week. Mr. Schulzen team, do we have the public works team here? Come on up. Okay. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life and well-being of the people of Carson City, Nevada. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders and children in Carson City to gain knowledge of and to maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public work programs in their respective communities. Whereas the year 2021 marks the 61st Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Now therefore, I Lori Bagwell, Mayor of Carson City, Nevada, on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim the week May 16th through the 22nd, 2021 as National Public Works Week. I urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies in activities, events and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety and quality of life. And boy, do they, I'm telling you what. Nothing but thank yous from all of us, our public works department. I'd put them up against any of them in the United States and just tell you, I bet we'd rank number one. So thank you so very much. You have comments you want to make?
Oh, we just got about a 50-minute presentation.
We, we're in recess. Come on up and take a picture. This is wonderful. Really thank you all. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Just get all mixed in here.
On the short end, it's all good.
Well, sit near me or stand near me. Last time I had to do Judge Armstrong, so yeah. Thank you guys so much. No, all of you. Really superb team. Superb team. Thank you. Yeah. All righty. This is great.
Look out, right? Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah. We didn't even-
We didn't color coordinate? We're gonna get better about this. Okay. We're gonna move on to Agenda Item 7D, which is a presentation to recognize May 2021 as the National Wildfire Awareness Month. Whereas wildfires significantly imp- Whereas, wildfires significantly impacts Nevada's environmental, economic, and social well-being. And whereas, residents of Nevada's fire-prone communities need to accept responsibility for living in high-fire hazard areas. Whereas, residents need to work together to prepare their homes and communities to survive wildfire and commit to become fire-adapted. Now therefore, I Lori Bagwell, Mayor of Carson City, Nevada, on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim that the City of Carson City supports the Nevada Wildfire Awareness Campaign from May through October 2021. This is a means for education and a call for residents of Carson City to act now to reduce the wildfire threat, prepare for wildfire, and become fire-adapted. Can't wait to hear what fire-adapted is. Anyway, thank you. Did you want to make any comment?
My name's Rod Ollin, the Wildland Fuels Management Officer. Wildland Fuels Management Officer, and I'd like to introduce Megan Kay. Sorry. I'd like to introduce Megan Kay. She is the Outreach Coordinator for the Living with Fire Program. And it's this partnership that works, the Living with Fire Program is the educational arm of what we are able to accomplish.
Thank you. And I just want to thank Mayor Bagwell and the Board of Supervisors and Chief Lemon and Rod for their continued support for becoming fire-adapted. Can I tell you what that is?
Yeah, we're ready. I hope I am.
Having a community that has engaged in firefight activities like defensible space and retrofitting homes to withstand wildfire so that wildfire can continue as a natural process without being devastating and without having the devastation and the loss of life in property. So that's the goal. And that's why we're here and that's why we're doing all this work. So I just want to thank you guys.
Thank you. Did you want to make a comment?
I think we've done.
Come on up and let's have a, let's have a fire-adapted moment with a picture. This is wonderful. Thank you all. It's so, it's just so wonderful to have you all here. Oh, great. Thank you again. Thank you so much for all you do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're on to bicycle. We've got a good cadre of different things today because we're gonna move on to bicycles. Okay, we're gonna move on to Agenda Item 7E, which is a presentation and proclamation to recognize the month of May as Bike Month. So I believe we have some muscle-powered individuals here to accept this proclamation. Whereas, the bicycle is a healthy and eco-friendly form of alternative transportation and an excellent tool for recreation and enjoyment of Carson City's scenic beauty. And whereas, the City of Carson City recognizes bicyclists as legitimate roadway users who therefore are entitled to legal and responsible use of the public roadway facilities in Carson City. And whereas, creating a bicycle-friendly community has been shown to improve citizens' health, well-being, and quality of life, grow the economy, attract tourism dollars, improve traffic safety, support student achievement, and reduce pollution, congestion, and wear and tear on our streets and roads. And now therefore, I Lori Bagwell, Mayor of Carson City, Nevada, do hereby proclaim May 2021 as Bike Month in Carson City. And yes, I'm gonna do the bicycle ride. It might be dangerous, but I'm gonna give it a try. Okay, perfect, perfect. Did you want to say anything? I need that. Last time, last time was Crash City, so I'm brave. I'm gonna do it again.
I will bring you a bike to ride if you were going to be there.
I am. I look forward to it.
My name's Nathan Harrison. I'm a Board Member-at-Large. And on behalf of myself, the Bike Month Planning Committee and the rest of the Board for Muscle Powered, I'd like to thank you guys for the proclamation. Just wanted to let you guys know that we're really excited about having public activities again this year. We didn't have that opportunity last year. And so we've got a bunch of really, really fun activities that hopefully citizens and everybody in Carson City can get out and enjoy. We've got, let me look at this real quick. I made some notes. We've got Tuesday night ladies' rides, and those are a mountain bike ride up in Ash Canyon. And then we've got a celebrity ride that's on the 14th. The. Yep. May 17th to the 21st is Bike to Work Week. And then on the, at 7:00 PM, May 19th is the Ride of Silence. And that one is basically in honor of all the cyclists that have died on the roadways in the United States over the last, you know, the last year. We have a Choose Your Cruise to celebrate the multiple eastside trails down by the Carson River. And so we've got three different routes that we're planning out. That's on the 26th, 6:00 PM. And then we've got a Bike and Gear Swap on the 29th. And that'll be for people to come out and trade, buy and sell used bike and sports equipment.
That should be an interesting new, see how that project goes.
Yeah, we'll see how that goes. We haven't done that one before.
Right. Well, come on in and get a picture with us. Again, thank you for all you do. Come on. Again, thank you, and I look forward to giving the ride a try, girl. All right, you're bringing me a bike.
Do you have helmets?
No.
Okay, I have a helmet, although you have to wear my helmet. But we could probably get you a new helmet.
It's all great. I love it. I look forward to it.
All right, we'll see you then.
Thank you. See you soon. I was gonna say, why don't we just take just a five-minute real quick break and we'll then get back on the regular agenda.
Yeah, we probably need a wipe. We need a designated wiper.
I'll be the designated wiper.
Oh, yeah.
I move to approve the consent agenda consisting of Item 8A from the City Manager, 9A from Finance, 10A from HHS, 11A from Public Works, and 12A and B from Purchasing Contracts, 13A from the Treasure, as presented.
Do you have a second?
I second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say no. Motion carried unanimously. Thank you so much. Let me catch up. Pages there. Okay, we're, we're not gonna do Agenda Item 14 as we don't have anything pulled. We're on Item Number 15A, which is a Discussion and Action Regarding Our Directives and Recommendations. Anything from city staff? And I see Ms. Akers is here.
Good morning. For the record, Nikki Akers, Director of Carson City Health and Human Services. I'm gonna give you the normal update of our cases and that. And then Jeannie will talk about vaccinations. So this is for the period April 18th through May 1st. There were 95 confirmed cases reported in Carson City. That's 35% of all the Quad County cases and a 20% decrease from the previous two-week period. As of yesterday, looking at the county tracker, or excuse me, two days ago, the 4th, things are moving quickly on me. Our positivity rate is 7.4%. So yay, Carson City's not flagged anymore. We had a high of about 11.7% on, in April. That was on the 18th of April. So that's where we're at on the 4th. We're still seeing exposure in the community and households. 20% were exposed in the community and 24% were exposed to someone in their household that tested positive. So those are still our two highest transmission areas. And I will let Jeannie talk about vaccination.
Hi, Jeannie. Good morning, everyone. Jeannie Freeman, for the record. It's been a while since I've seen you. It's nice to see you again. Before I talk about vaccinations, I'd like to put a few thank yous out there. I want to say thank you to the senior center staff for allowing us to use space over there for a while. We are now all together in our new building, what used to be the United Latino Building. We are now over on Root Street. Also like to say thank you to Parks and Rec. They continue to provide help at events and locations and the office space that they did. And then a huge shout out to IT and Facilities. When it came time to move us over to the new building, they buckled in and they got us all moved in one day. So they moved 31 people in one day, and that included the furniture and all the IT. So if you want to talk about incredible departments, they are rock stars and they are heroes for what we have been doing. So to give you an update on vaccinations, as of May 4th, Carson City has had 52.86% of the Carson City population 16 years and older that have initiated their vaccinations. And we have 40.39% that have completed their vaccination process. So when we look at that, that's important. Initiation of vaccine is important, but completion is super important. And that's what we need to make sure people are doing, is getting that completion. Our numbers are higher than what the state numbers are. The state numbers are 46% have initiated and 34% have completed. So it's great that Carson City is higher, but we need to get even higher. If we want to see the masks go away, if we want to see the overall normalcy of life come back and everything be without that fear or that concern, because we still have cases. We still have people contracting. We still have those situations happening. We need more people to be vaccinated, and we continue to offer those vaccines. Of the Quad Counties, Carson City's rates are the highest, which is encouraging. We also have a more condensed population in Carson, and so we have more contact. I'm super excited that we have all these events that we're gonna be having this summer. We're gonna be having those things come back. I really want these face masks to go away. I'm sure you all want the face masks to go away. So we need people to come out. And if you're on the fence and you have concerns, please call the Quad County Hotline and ask questions. We have information for you. We will not check as to whether or not you're a Carson City resident. We won't check whether or not you're a Quad County resident. We won't even check if you're a Nevada resident. If you want to be vaccinated, we're gonna get you vaccinated. If you got your first shot somewhere else and you need to get your second shot, call the COVID hotline. We will do what we can to try to help you get that vaccination process completed. We want you vaccinated if you want to be vaccinated, and we're trying to make sure that that's there. We also want to make sure that we're very clear. If you are a citizen of another country and you have not become a citizen of the United States, we will still vaccinate you. We are not going to ask for anything related to that other than your name and your ID just so that we can make sure we give you that documentation that you need, that you are vaccinated. So please, if you have interest in being vaccinated, feel free to call the hotline. In the Quad Counties, a total of one, and this is of all providers, pharmacies, federally qualified health centers, the hospitals and everything. In the Quad Counties, a total of 109,217 doses of vaccine have been administered. That is first and second doses. Your Carson City Health and Human Services has administered 47.3% of those doses. Okay, so we have done an incredible job, which is almost 52,000 doses that your CCHHS staff have administered in this region. One of the other projects that we are super proud about and that Ronnie Gallis, our Clinic Services Manager, has led the effort in, is vaccinating our homebound population. Those who are truly homebound based on that Medicare definition of what it means to be homebound. She has worked with our senior centers in the region, our human services entities within the region. And as of last week, we had a total of 238 people that were identified in the Quad County region as truly homebound, and 180 of them we have vaccinated. And the rest of them have either refused or denied, or sorry, refused or declined the vaccine for a variety of reasons. But we continue to offer that, and we go out and we do the first doses, and we go out and do the second doses. Keep in mind that the staff, they're being paid out of the grants to serve the Quad Counties, but they are traveling across over 3,000 square miles to make sure that they are delivering that vaccine. And they're everywhere from Silver Springs to Carson, down to the TRE area in Douglas, up to Fernley. Wherever they need to go, they've been going and doing that. And so sometimes it may be a 10-hour day, and they vaccinated six people. But that's what they needed to do because that's a vulnerable group for us, and we need to make sure that we're able to do that.
And if I can just make an addition here. Also, that staff has been going out to the Trick area so that, that little piece that butts up to I-80 that has a lot of the manufacturing staff have been out in that area as well.
So like in Lockwood?
Yes. Yeah, because it's Story County.
And then what we are, I guess, somewhat happy to announce is that May 5th, yesterday, was our one-year anniversary of doing community-based testing for COVID. So if you recall, back May 5th to May 12th, we were set up here. We had the Quad County Emergency Operations Center in this building. We had a giant call center, and we were. We had a giant call center, and we were setting up appointments for people to do community-based testing. We were the first jurisdiction in the whole state to do asymptomatic and symptomatic testing. And that became a model for most other jurisdictions across the state. In 2020 alone, we did 23,476 COVID tests. To date, we've done about 25,000, which means since January started, we've only done about 1,500, and testing has gone down. We anticipate the testing to go down, especially as we vaccinate more, right? That's the intent of it. But we are continuing to do community-based testing through May. We'll continue to offer the vaccines. We do anticipate the American Council for Immunization Practices is meeting next week about the Pfizer vaccine being approved for emergency use authorization for those 12 to 15. And so we are ready for that. We have Pfizer on hand. We'll be ready to be able to offer that if that's something that our youth are wanting, and we'll be requesting more so that we can do that. Any questions for me?
So do you anticipate, or when do you anticipate that you'll actually just do appointments in the clinic? Do you see that coming? Walk-ins, that people will just walk in and get their vaccine?
Sure. Thank you for the question. That's a great question. So actually, what we're doing at all of our community-based vaccination events now, we honor the appointments, because we know some people like to have a schedule and they like to have that appointment. But we've also opened them up so that we always have walk-ins available. Whether we have the Janzen, the Moderna, or the Pfizer, we've always got those walk-ins available, because sometimes people don't want to schedule, and they're like, oh, if I've got the idea today, then I'll go for it. We do anticipate that there will be opportunities at some point for the clinic to have that. I'm not sure what that looks like at this point in time, because we're also working on getting kids vaccinated for those vaccines they didn't get that they need for school as we move into that. And there's still that vaccine timing. So you're not supposed to get your COVID vaccine two weeks before another vaccine or, you know, within a certain amount of time. That may change and stuff. So there's a little bit of this logistics scheduling kind of piece. And we have people who show up and they're like, I'm so excited to get my COVID vaccine. I got my Shinrix vaccine for shingles two days ago, and we're like, ah, okay. So we'll see you in 12 days. You know, here's another event. We'll get you rescheduled and stuff like that. But we don't have, it's just some of those logistics and stuff. But we do anticipate there being that. We're already prepping and ready for if booster shots become a thing. If, that's a big if, we don't know, but we're ready for that. So as an agency to serve, as a public health preparedness program to serve, as community providers in working with our federally qualified health centers and our private providers, to be ready to serve the public as the need arises.
Perfect. Does anyone else have any questions? I don't see anything. Thank you so very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
It's so exciting that, like you said. All right, we're going to move on then. Ms. Paulson?
Good morning, and thank you very much to all the hard work that Carson City Health and Human Services has done. They played a huge, huge role in why we can have the following conversation today. So I just want to thank you and all your team. You guys have been amazing. So as you recall, Carson City's transition plan was presented to the COVID Task Force on April 14, and we received Board of Supervisors approval on April 15. This plan met the requirements of the state, and the city received the delegation of authority from the governor to manage COVID mitigation measures as of May 1. Shortly after the approval of the plan by the board, the governor issued Directive 44 on April 19, announcing that as of May 1, the state emergency directives would no longer include social distancing and sanitation guidelines. And counties would have the authority to include these measures within their own mitigation plans. So in light of this, and the governor's announcement that all remaining state directives, except for the mask requirements, will terminate on June 1, we decided to revisit the city's plan. The matrix that I have up on the screen compares the city's mitigation measures with those of our neighboring counties. Carson City, as well as Story County, currently have the most restrictive guidelines requiring social distancing of six feet between groups or physical barriers. No more than six persons per tables indoor. Carson City allows 10 for outdoors. Public gatherings or events, there's a max of 50% capacity or 250, whichever is less, for indoors, and a max of 250 outdoors. Douglas and Lyon Counties adopted no social distancing requirements, and Clark County reduced theirs to just three feet. Douglas and Lyon eliminated their persons-per-table limitations, and Washoe allows 10, and Clark County is at 12. Douglas, Lyon, and Washoe also eliminated occupancy restrictions on public gatherings and events. And Clark County will allow events up to 20,000 people. Given the reduction in test positivity rates that Ms. Aker just talked about earlier, and hospitalizations, the daily increases in vaccinations administered, and the availability of vaccines, including walk-in opportunities at city events and also local pharmacies, we're proposing the removal of occupancy and social distancing restrictions from the city's plan and allowing our businesses to determine which recommended social distancing and hygiene requirements will meet their needs and the needs of our community. I think they already talked about the percentage of our vaccinations initiated. I'll just add that Carson City and Washoe County are the only counties above 50%. Washoe County is one percentage point above us, and there might be a little competition there. So come on, Carson City, we want to be in first place.
We were for the longest time, and they must have had a rash of data input.
So we will also continue to follow the governor's directives that remain in place through May 31 and the mask and face covering requirements that were just recently updated by the governor on May 3 in Directive 45 to align with the CDC guidelines. And the CDC had issued updated guidelines for individuals based on whether or not they'd been vaccinating. And this includes new protocols for masks and face coverings.
Thank you, Ms. Paulson. Does, I don't see any hands raised. So if not, then I'll, who would like to make a motion for the approval of the Restore Carson City Transition Plan? Fancy name.
I just want to ask, we didn't, I didn't hear Nancy's recommendation for outdoor. Did you talk specifically about outdoor, Nancy? I heard you say removing the indoor one, but I didn't hear you comment on the outdoor. Okay, so that, you just meant?
Indoor and outdoor, yeah.
So occupancy to me didn't mean outdoor, because it's not really an occupancy. But that's okay. I got you now. Thank you.
Supervisor Jones?
So the only restriction we're going to have is the wearing of the mask, right?
Correct. The wearing of the mask is under the governor's Directive Number 45.
Right, okay.
Does anyone want to make a motion? Who's up today? Supervisor Giomi?
Yeah, I move to approve the recommendation read on the record by the city manager.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Jones. So I have a motion and a second to approve the Carson City's transition plan, and that will be effective today upon passage and approval, just to clarify for the record. So all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say no. Motion carried unanimously. Thank you for all your hard work, and again, for doing those vaccinations. And then I just want to shout out to the Carson City residents. You want to get rid of those masks? Help us a little bit more. You're doing a super job taking your vaccinations, which is why we could do this. Help us some more, and let's work to no masks.
I second that.
Yes, already seconded. There we go. Thank you again so much. We're going to move on to Agenda Item 15B, which is a discussion concerning the COVID-19 vaccination grant. Ms. Akers?
Good morning. For the record, Nikki Aker, Director of Carson City Health and Human Services. This is one of those grants, again, that we have received as a pass-through from the feds. The feds grant it to the state, and then it's passed through to CCHHS for the COVID vaccination. And we get the, we've received this grant because we already received grants from the Nevada State Immunization Program. And what this grant will be used for is personnel, contractual employees, and operating expenses for vaccination events and computer equipment. This grant does not require a match, and the grant period is July 1, 2020. And I'm not making a mistake on that. It is July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2022. And that amount is $1,501,679.69.
That's phenomenal. Supervisor White, if a question?
Thank you. First, let me apologize for not getting this question to you before now. It was a serious oversight, actually. In the staff summary, on the second line, it says that this grant has to do with vaccines for children. And then down in background and issues, the second line says it's for expenses related to vaccinating adults. How does, how do we get the two together?
So this, it's, what it comes through is the CDC's program, which is the Immunization and Vaccines for Children program. So that's the program that's taken out of CDC. And then that, the activities that were requested, though, were for adults.
Okay.
So it's just the program that it's coming out of at the CDC.
Thank you.
I don't see any other further questions, so thank you so much. And it's, I'm glad we have sufficient funding. I'm assuming right to be able to accomplish this for our community. And thank those nurses one more time for us for Nurse Day.
And I'll just give you a heads up. There's one more grant that I'm coming at the next meeting, and then we may have, we're going to have another one that's coming down this way, so.
That's wonderful. Okay, thank you so much. Okay, we're going to move on to Item 15C, which is discussion and possible action regarding the ratification of an interlocal agreement between Carson City and the state of Nevada. Do I have anyone with any questions on this? It's just a formality on a formula that we have to pay. If not, I'll take a motion. Supervisor Giomi?
I move to ratify the interlocal agreement, and Amendment Number 1 is presented.
I second it.
Motion and a second to ratify the agreement. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say no. Thank you. Motion carried unanimously. We're on to Agenda Item 16A, discussion and possible action regarding a determination that Gardner Engineering, Inc. is the lowest in responsive bidder. Do I have any questions on this item? Supervisor Giomi?
Yeah, just, I just wanted to check and ask Randy if he had any concept of why we only had one bidder for, you know, a mid-range project.
Yeah, great question. Thank you for the question. Randy Rice, city engineer, for the record. I don't know if I have a great answer for that. I will say people are very busy. We're struggling in a lot of areas. Painting be another one. We're seeing large escalation in material prices. And so I expect that to be the case moving forward. It's unfortunate. We do want competition. I think we have a great amount of projects. We have great types of projects. And so we will be looking at trying to address that whatever way we can. But yeah, for this one, I just, I don't think we had a lot of interest, because people were simply just too busy.
And I noticed in some of the bids, our engineers' estimates now are falling short where they weren't before. And so I'm assuming we're going to be addressing that before we go to bid again, looking at things, because the cost of, I mean, I do a fair amount of work in the construction side of things for my regular job, and cost and availability of product is ridiculous right now.
It's absolutely correct. Yes, yeah. And, you know, on this one, too, we actually had a vendor come out and help us develop the price on that, because, you know, we are very cognizant that our engineers aren't perfect at coming up with these bids, and contractors do have a much better idea. And unfortunately, the information we got didn't turn out to be the case. And I think, again, because of price escalation, that made a big difference as well, so.
Yeah, you know, just to give you an example, I was dealing with a vendor on a project I'm working on, and it's to build a mobile medical unit, and that's what this company does. And they are sitting on about 30 half-million-dollar units, because they can't get foam for the seats. It's not available. So it's a crazy time. All right, thank you.
And if I can take one more minute, too, keep this in mind, because we are going to have these challenges with piping. That's another big one, resins. We're having huge delays out of the Midwest. And so there might be the potential where we have a project that moves forward, and we might come back to you in six months or 12 months with some large change orders because of that. So please bookmark this conversation, because it may come up again.
Thank you. I don't see any further questions, so I'll accept a motion. Oh, does somebody else have a question? Sorry, Supervisor Jones?
I'm prepared to make the motion. I move to forward the contract as presented.
Do I have a second?
I second.
I have a motion and a second to award the contract as presented. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say no. Motion carried. Thank you again very much. Okay, we're going to move to Item 16B, which is discussion and possible action regarding a determination that Berdick Escavating Company is the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. Does anyone have any questions on Item 16B? Seeing none, I'll accept a motion. Supervisor Giomi?
I move to read the contract as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to award the contract as presented. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say no. Motion carried unanimously. Thank you. We're on Agenda Item 17A, discussion and presentation on our 2017 flood disaster. Mr. Rice and, and Mr. Fellows, thank you.
Yes, certainly. Thanks for having us here. We've been asked to kind of give you a brief update on where things lie with the FEMA products or projects that we've had over the last few years. I brought my trusty sidekick, Mr. Rob Fellows, who's been directly linked to that. And I apologize, Randy Rice, for the record, city engineer. If you have any questions, you know, please feel free to interrupt. We'd be happy to entertain him at that time. And then one thing I did want to bring up, just to put this in context for the board, the last time we had a disaster was in 2005. We didn't wrap up that final disaster until 2012 with the final administrative and paperwork. So, you know, personally, I feel really good about this. I think we've done a really good job. There's obviously some hiccups with any type of work that we do here, but I think Rob's done an excellent job, and he's done a great job helping put this presentation together. So excited to support him in this.
All right, thank you, Randy. My name is Rob Fellows. I'm your chief stormwater engineer and floodplain manager. Today, we're just going to go through a summary of what went on in 2017 and kind of how we are, where we are with the grant and payment and that kind of thing. First of all, you got to realize that FEMA, over the years, puts out these documents that guides recovery, and it's called the Public Assistant Program and Policy Guide. They refer to it as Papa G. And that outlines all the different phases that FEMA has to go through and whoever's going to get the grant to receive the grant funds through the state. And so this document changes every couple of years. So the stuff that we had learned about in 2005 and was at that time, the guidance is now much different than what it is in 2017, and it'll change again. One of the things you may not realize is kind of the sequence of things that we do when FEMA comes in. So a disaster is declared, and the FEMA group comes in, and they get together. They want to go out and do a site assessment. So we go out and we document the damage, and we take measurements, and that's the basis of the estimate. We often talk about eligible and not eligible costs, and you would think that, you know, everything is eligible, but they always comment on what is not eligible. And so they're really tied into how that all works. Everything goes into what they call a project worksheet. And you'll see this referenced all the time, PW. And they have a lot of acronyms. But each project is laid out in what they call a PW, and it's for each category of work. So as they go through the process, it's being reviewed, and they look at what is, what the repair costs are and the eligibility of those. So as it goes through the process, the PW is reviewed. So as it goes through the process, the, the PW is reviewed and signed. And then what happens is, once it's deemed eligible and obligated, the state is notified that the grant is ready for the sub-grantee, like the city. So everything goes to the state. And then from the state, it goes to the city. Then what the city does is, once we've signed the grant, we follow the, our normal contract procedures. We do contracts if necessary and bids and so forth. We, we do the work, we do the repairs, we submit for reimbursement. And then what they do is they go through all the paperwork and validate everything again that it's eligible. And then they, they do the payment. So there's different categories. Some categories have timeframes of six months. Other categories have timeframes of 18 months. But overall, there's, there's opportunities for time extensions. If, if there's a question that you have, you don't have to wait until the end to, to ask it. So there were two disasters. The first one was in January. It's, the, the number for that is the 4303 disaster. There were 21 projects in that disaster. And if you look by category, you can see that obviously there's debris removal. You have emergency protective measures. That's, that's actively fighting the, the flood. So there were 10 items on the, on roads and bridges, one on water control, one on equipment, and then seven on parks. The February disaster was very similar, 22 projects. And you have to remember that some of the damage on the first one carried through to the second one. So there was quite a bit of discussion as to which disaster the, the project should be tagged to. So we had a lot of discussion on that. So what they do is they further divide each PW into a large and small category. And so we had four large projects, 39 small projects. And this, this dollar limit, 123,100, that's the cutoff where anything less is small, anything larger is, is a larger project. But what's interesting to note on this is, back in 2005, the dollar limit was 58,000. And so it's obviously that they want everything to be a small project. Because down below, if you get into the large project category, they pay the actual cost, more or less. And you get to account for engineering and different things that you don't normally count in a small project. And so when it's a small project, whatever the estimate is, that's kind of what you're bound to. And so whether it's more or less, you got to go through that process. And at the end, they, they do what they call is a balancing. They balance the funds between all of the different projects. So if you made, if you save money on one small project and you went over on another one, you're able to shift that, that money to, to the larger one.
Does, does it being a small project make it go faster? I mean, are there other benefits for us for breaking the projects into small projects to, to move them along? Or is it just a lot of paperwork, no matter what?
It, it seems to be about the same for the large and the small. Because our limit, like to go through the bidding process, is 100,000. So it could be a small project, but we could still have to do the same process because it's, it's still over 100,000. So it's, it's about the same. The other thing that they really emphasized was the, any kind of scope or time changes. And so they said, you can't, you can't do anything different than what was in the PW. And oftentimes, the PW description wasn't exactly correct. And so that made it difficult to negotiate. Well, can we do this? Are we going to get in trouble? Do we wait for them to tell us it's, it's okay to do it? So we have, we had a few of those things that went on. So as of April 29, we, we've submitted all the paperwork for all the projects. And we've, we've got 23 projects that are complete and the funds have been received. And of those projects, we've actually closed out some of those. So we've, we've gone beyond what happened, you know, in 2005, which, which is good. So they've, they've really looked at all the paperwork and were able to, to close those out. So that's a benefit. So we, we've got 18 projects that we've submitted. And we're, we're going through the process of giving them all the, the documentation. They have a different, they have like a three-tiered review process. So they go through and make sure they got everything. Then they, they look at it carefully. And you have to prove everything, you know? Did the contractor get paid? Well, when did he cash his check? You know, and all that kind of thing. They do that. And then we have two projects that we're, we're waiting approval because we, we do want to do more work. And we're kind of out of time. And we're, we've submitted the paperwork asking for more time. And we want to use that extra funds of a small project to cover the expense. And I'll describe what those are in a minute. So when you look at the, the cost of things, the total grant for small projects, and this is just the grant funds. This isn't take account for the, the money that the city's paying. It's a 75-25 match. So this is all the grant funds. So for the small projects, there was about $930,000 and change. So we've received funds or requested funds for 780,000 and change. And so the difference is 149,000 and change. And so we expect to recover most of that. Not all of that can be recovered because you can't make money from one disaster to the other. So, you know, it'd be nice if we could move money from this one to the other one to take advantage of everything, but it just doesn't work that way. So but we'll, I think we'll get at least half of that, maybe more. On the large projects, we submitted, there was estimated 532,000 and change. We've requested or received 433,000. And the difference is about 100,000. So in that, those being large projects, we're not able to get any of those funds because it's only paying for exactly what, what the project entailed. Interesting enough, some of the projects came under. You know, like the Brunswick Canyon project came under the amount. That's where part of that difference is. The other part is some of the larger projects, some of the paperwork showed that we had double counted some of, some of our numbers. And so obviously, we can't double count the numbers. So that, that's where a lot of part of that is. So the...
Rob, can I ask you? Overall, on the flood events, we, as the city, had estimated the amount we were going to need for match. So when you got all said and done and moving all the money around, how did we do on the city match portion, our general fund activity, where we, we were able to complete the projects? We didn't have to stop a project because we didn't either have the match or any problems? We were able to complete them all?
Yes, we, we were able to cover everything that we went for.
Okay.
Yeah. So that, that was, that was really helpful. And I know, I know everything, all the money is going back into the insurance fund. So that's the, that's the fund that, that was used to pay for all these things and then get reimbursed.
Perfect. Thank you.
So this one right here, this was the Brunswick Canyon flood, you know, flood disaster portion. And interestingly enough, this, this was, I spent a lot of time on this. And there was, there was damage all, all through this road. This goes up to Brunswick Reservoir and down to the Carson River. And we went out several times and looked at the damage. And when, when the, when the PW was met or was written, it looked like it was all there. But in fact, they had left out half of the damage. And we'll go through what, what's happening with that one. But, so we, we submitted and signed the PW in August of 17. And so we needed a BLM permit to, to do the work. And that's allowed to get an, an extension if you, if you need a permit. So that, that was approved. And so we, in 20, in July of 2018, we submitted that and they agreed to, to grant us the right of way. And it took all the way till August of 2020. And finally, the board approved and approved the, the right of way to be able to start that work. So it was, you know, what, 18 months to go through that process? But now we have the right of way, so we're, we're good from now on. Immediately, even before it was approved by the board, we went out for, for bids. We received bids and awarded the project in September. The contractor started the work in November of 2020 and completed it in December. And that was the deadline, as far as the state was going to get that done. And then we, we were following up early this year. And they came and said, hey, by the way, your request for the extra work was approved by FEMA. And I go, that's great. How, you know, do I get more time? How's, how's this going to work? And basically, they said that they'll issue a new grant with a new timeframe for the extra work that we, we need to do on Brunswick Canyon. So when I say it's going to be over, it's not going to be completely over, but it'll, it'll be close. So that's, that's the extra work. So we, we did the repairs going down to the river, but we didn't do the repairs going up to the reservoir. Another example I wanted to give you is the Empire Ranch Trail. As you know, that there's a lot of activity down, down by the river. And people are very anxious to, to get walking again and, and go by the river. And they were asking, well, why isn't anything happening to the Empire Ranch Trail? And the reason was is we didn't have the grant yet. So FEMA, there's a, there's a historic bridge down there that SHIPA was holding up the grant because they wanted assurances on how the repairs were going to be done. And so we, we had to get a historic architect and a, and a mason, you know, historic mason from Virginia City to come down. And we went through this process and we said, oh, by the way, it's going to cost more money. So we, we put that in our request. And they finally got, got the grant approved, but they didn't approve the more money in the grant. So we're kind of dealing with that with another request. And so this is the other one that's kind of hanging out there, is we, we made a request for more time and more money to actually fix the, the bridge. The other portions of the, the damage was repaired and is, is working right now. Again, I didn't do my slideshow there. But basically, the majority of the, the path was restored very quickly. And we were just waiting to know how we could progress on that historic bridge. Lastly, this, this, this is kind of an overall map that I had made, kind of showing the areas of damage within the city. And I, you know, I, I was looking for the, the damage map of 2005 and even 1997. They're all very similar. I, I think over the years, the damage is getting less and less. With each disaster, there's always upgrades and there's always mitigation. And so it's, even FEMA has increased the, the percentage of money that goes into mitigation. So a lot of these projects have reinforcing in them to, to limit the damage next time. And I, I think there's always going to be damage. But if, over time, if we could limit the damage, it'll be much better the next time it happens. All right, any questions?
I don't see any questions. But I really want to thank you for bringing this presentation forward because having served here a long time and through these is the general public just is like, what is the problem? Get right out there and get my trail open and do this. And you're like, I, I wish it wasn't so much red tape to get in and get a project done and get it approved. But I think this was really important that the public understands it's not the city not performing or not wanting to open up all these viable, wonderful trails and things like that, that it's, it's really a long, arduous process to get this done and to get the recovery. Because otherwise, if we just did it, then the taxpayer would be footing the bill. And, and maybe there is a discussion point on, do we wait for FEMA? And how, how important is a particular area? And maybe we do it without FEMA, but it's a good discussion point. So thank you. Supervisor Giomi?
Yeah, I just, I just want to point out, too, because I think we get this question. They say, why, you know, and, and, and Rob mentioned this, why isn't the city fixing that so that it doesn't get destroyed every time? And, and I think part of what people need to realize is that there are channels to convey water. And there's always going to be, especially in a 100-year or a 200-year or 300-year flood event, there's always going to be damage. And those, those water conveyances that we build are designed to a certain standard. And if the flood exceeds that standard, there will always be damage. But, but what I think the city's goal is to have that damage occur to the water conveyance methods as opposed to private property. And that's, it's kind of what you're seeing, you know, Mills Park, Long Ranch. There was damage in those areas, but they were to trails. They weren't to people's homes. And I, I think that's a key, you know, the, the river is another example where, yes, that trail got washed out and it's an inconvenience. But it didn't, you know, it didn't wash somebody's house down the river. And so I think it's important to understand that, you know, we live in a valley and the water is always going to go from the mountains to the river in this valley. And it has to get there. And, and what Rob's job and his team is to get it there as safely as possible. But, yeah, there's always going to be some damage. And, you know, the goal really is to, to, you know, push that damage to the infrastructure that's supposed to convey the water so that it doesn't affect people. So I, I think that's an important point to mention.
I don't see any further questions. So thank you both very much. Again, a very needed presentation. Thank you. Okay, we're on agenda item 18A, which is the, for an appointment for a member to the Carson City Regional Transportation Commission to fill a partial term that expires December 2022. Ms. Paulson, who is going to go first? Mr. Lloyd or Mr. Dotson?
Hi.
Let's start with Mr. Lloyd. Okay. You'll come to the spot over here. It's a more visible for everyone. We'll just make sure Mr. Dotson cannot... And you make sure, though, he's not out in the foyer where he can hear. We try to be fair and not let him, uh...
Oh, yeah.
Hear your answers. Okay, thank you. Okay, well, thank you so much for coming today and applying for this position. Have you, do you know, understand the process, what's going to happen?
I believe so. Thank you. And I just want to thank the board and the mayor for my invite.
It's, it's wonderful. So why don't you tell me a little bit on how, if you had five or six projects to consider with a, a pot of money, what criteria would you utilize to prioritize which projects were funded?
So assuming that the city has done their, the county has done their, their work and, uh, prepared a level of need and have budgeted for them, I would take in the thoughts of the public and the need of the city and establish a, a level of need.
Sorry, I'm just writing really quick, too. Supervisor Giomi, did you want to go next? You're still writing, too. Oh, see, it's good to be first sometimes. Nope, I'll come back to you. Supervisor White?
Similar question. But how do you balance never enough finances, never enough manpower, and a lot of constituent complaints on the roads? How do you figure out where to go with those three elements?
I toured some of the roads in the northwest. And there's still some properties that have their lots going clear to the center of the road. And the road is not improved. I think that is a real liability for the city's personal opinion. You just have to listen, think it through, and put the money where you feel that it's best needed.
Thank you.
Supervisor Jones?
You say you've kind of toured our town.
Somewhat, somewhat, sir, yes.
You have a general idea.
How do you, what part of the city do you, what part of the roads do you think are the worst?
I haven't toured them all, but of course, the Fifth Street Roundabout is gonna be a severe problem when the school is built out. And I think that, that is very important to get that road project done. And I noticed that you got another one, uh, Long Street Reconstruction and with sewer and water and storm drain. And so there's several areas of the town that need updating and reconstruction.
Thank you, sir.
Supervisor Shutey?
Hello, and thank you for applying. What are several ideas you would like to see incorporated into road projects?
Safety and public access and interest. And, go ahead.
Can you explain public interest?
Well, there's a lot of interest in the Fifth Street Roundabout because of the school. And I think they came to the public a little late after the decisions were made and another, that didn't confer with the constituents in the area. I think that was a shortcoming of the school district, not yours. And I just think we need to be in tune with the public and do the best job we can in safety and what have you.
Great, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Supervisor Giomi?
Again, Mr. Lloyd, thanks for your application. You know, not this, that this is in your purview necessarily, but I'd like to hear your thoughts on how we, as a community, could influence solving the loss of gas tax revenue. There's no question that gas tax revenue has decreased. The pandemic decreased it even more. And so all of our repair and road construction is based on gasoline tax.
That's interesting. I was in the petroleum business for 35 years, so I know a lot about gas tax.
I don't know if you were a part of the solution or part of the problem then. In, in any case, you know, what, what grandiose idea would you have for, for equitable, equitable, charging people to use roads? I guess that's the best way to put it.
Well, that's a really large question because you keep adding diesel tax on and that's just transferred to the people in your community. And it, like I say, is another expense for the drivers or the truck operators and what have you. That, that is a very tough one. Somehow, we probably should be able to charge for the electric cars. And I don't know what revenue source, how you'd go about that at this time. We're gonna get more electric cars and hopefully more electric trucks. But the fossil fuel situation is not gonna disappear. It can't. And they talk about the fuel and they took the sulfur out of the diesel and it cut the mileage by 20%, so that just was putting more pollution into the atmosphere and not, not gaining a thing. I don't know whether that's answered your question or not, but.
No right or wrong answer. Thank you.
It's tough. It's a very tough one.
So do you have any just general comments or things you'd like to bring forward for consideration?
You've seen my bio. I do a lot of volunteer work. I do volunteer work for the Dream Center and Lions Club and anybody that really needs the, the help. And I would enjoy volunteering for the city and maybe put my two cents worth in. It might work.
Well, thank you so much again for your application. You're welcome to stay and listen to the next candidate and then we'll make our decision.
And I'd like to introduce my wife, Alice.
Well, hello, Alice. I'm glad you can come and give them a little bit of support. Nice to see you. Thank you again. Ms. Paulson, maybe Mr. Dotson? Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you so much for coming and applying today for an RTC position. If you want to state your name for the record, it would be great.
My name is Jim Dotson.
Okay, have you been through this process before? Oh, his mic's off. There you go. Have you been through this process before or familiar?
No, I have not.
Okay, so we're gonna do a, a question each of us and then we'll compare notes and make a decision today on who will receive the appointment.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'll take the first question. If you had a pot of money and six or seven projects to utilize that, that pot of money, how would you prioritize the projects to select who gets funded, which project gets funded?
Well, I, I believe that some objective prioritization process would have to be implemented. And I know that the RTC has, has those processes. And I think there, it's a balancing act between certainly trying to get the most bang for the buck, cost efficiencies, and then addressing the needs of all the transportation users. I think that consideration would have to be given to the funding availability for the types of projects that were being considered. And certainly if priority might be given to the ability to only fund that type of project with available funding if it was going to lapse, for example. And again, I know that in my career, looking at transportation projects, I think that it's evolved much for the better. Early in my career, I think that the, the needs of the motorists were overemphasized to the detriment of, of other transportation system owners, users such as pedestrians and, and bicyclists. And I think that you'd want to give priority to projects that address the needs of multiple users as best as you could.
Thank you. Supervisor Giomi?
Mr. Dotson, thank you for, for applying and, and putting yourself out there. Much appreciated. You know, it's no secret over the last several years that, that gasoline tax revenues are down, electric car uses are up. COVID made that even worse. And since gas tax is the source of everything we do with roads, what would, if, if it were in your purview, what would your solution be to equitable distribution of, of road fees, I guess is the bottom line? You know, how would you equitably distribute the cost of maintaining and building new roads to the users?
Yes, Supervisor, I, I know that it's a difficult issue and certainly not only one that the RTC faces, but a national problem. And there's been a lot of effort because of the, the changing dynamics that you expressed about better fuel efficiencies and emphasis on electric vehicles to benefit, of course, the environment. That the, the, the purchasing power of the, the gas tax, gas tax has diminished. And certainly, as you said, that as it's the primary source of funding for the RTC system, I know that they're not keeping up, that the, the needs certainly outpace the, the demands of the current funding. So I've actually been involved in discussions about other ways of funding, such as mileage tax. I think that has the, the benefit of addressing the, the other types of vehicle uses. Gas tax indexing, for example, is available, I, I think, through state legislations to, to take a look at. I would caution that in Washoe County, that's implemented. And I believe that a lot of folks in Washoe County, when they can, fill up their, their cars in Carson City. So, so there are, is a plus and a minus with, with that type of system. But I, I think that those, those two things are ones that are probably the, the most prevalent and that would, because of the, the changing dynamic, need to be looked at the most strongly.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor White?
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
So how do you find a balance between never enough money, never enough financing, or never enough manpower and abundance of constituent complaints about roads?
Well, as, as you know, it's a tough one. It's a tough, tough balancing act. And I think that it's important to address the, the citizens' complaints, try to, try to educate those citizens as to, you know, what, what the needs are out there and explain, you know, why the, the system is set up as it is. I know that the, the RTC has the, the revolving district work that you do for the preservation program. And I think that, you know, it's a, it's an equitable way of addressing needs and, you know, but that's one that requires the patience of, of the users. And I think that a big job would be to, to look for additional ways to create efficiencies, which I know certainly you look at now where you would try to, to prioritize your projects to cut mobilization costs, for, for example. Look for more effective preservation strategies. We're all aware of the, the bang for the buck when you can get on preservation early as opposed to letting the system deteriorate to the point where you have to do major reconstruction. So again, I think that we just have to explain to the, the citizenry and the, and the complaints exactly how we're addressing the program and, and why we establish the priorities that we do.
Supervisor Jones?
Good morning, Jim.
Good morning.
Thank you for applying. You've lived here a long time, have you?
Oh, yes, I have. I've been in Carson.
You're basically familiar with Carson and their streets?
Yes, I am.
Okay. In your opinion, is there one area that you think is, if you were a member of RTC, that you would encourage to spend the money on initially? One area of town, one part of our town?
Well, again, I'm aware of the, the, the districts that are established and the rotation of, of the, which appears to me to be a, a good equitable way of looking at the system. I don't think that I see one that, you know, may have overreaching political boundaries, for example, that would, and I, I think there's a conscious effort to, to not do that and establish in those boundaries. I live in the, in the northwest part of the, of, of the city, so I'm most familiar with what the problems there are, of course. But, and I understand, I, I see effort being made to address certain of those problems and others, again, that are, are just in line as a, a need that needs to be addressed. But I don't know that I've noticed any particular area that, that is lacking. I know that on the, the major, like the regional road system, big effort is made there. The recent projects, the downtown project and the South Carson projects are good ones. And again, I, I've looked at some of the, the program upcoming, the, the Fifth Street area. I know with the, the roundabout and the, the change in the Eagle Valley School District out there, that your plans to address and make improvements out in that area, which I certainly think is valid. And then again, other of your projects up, King's Canyon that you're extending up there with the use of federal lands funds, certainly that, that project, you know, you couldn't apply those funds to, to other worthwhile needs. So again, I, I really don't know that I've seen, I can point to examples where I see a need, North Carson Street, for example. But again, I know that, you know, that's an upcoming priority and that it, it will be addressed as timely as possible. I see other roads that are certainly in, in worse condition than others, collector roads and some of the local streets. But, but again, with the concepts that you have, the, addressing those programs by district, I'm sure that they'll be addressed.
Thank you.
Supervisor Shutey?
Thank you so much for applying. And my question is, what are several ideas you would like to see incorporated into our road projects?
Well, I've spent, I've spent a fair amount of my career looking at alternative delivery types of projects. I'm a strong believer in collaboration on projects. And I think that where you can align goals with the, the people that are constructing the project, with the, the users and then the, the owners or the, the financiers of the projects, the, the better, better off you are. So rather than the traditional design, bid, build projects that are often used, I think on larger projects, the, the C Mar or the design, build, alternative delivery systems have merit. And then you can take the expertise of various people, the people that use the system, the people that know the most about designing, the people that know the most about construction to create a better project. So that would be, be one idea that I would, would like to see incorporated with. Having said that, I know that that would be certainly only applicable to, to other larger scale projects. Another thing that I've been a big believer in are performance specifications. I think this, this reaches the whole gamut from the planning documents that, such as the RTIP that are employed, the TIP, where now there are performance measures. They appear to me to be appropriate performance measures. I think that that also would apply to construction specifications. I've been an advocate of end result or performance related specifications. I think a lot of prescriptive specifications maybe missed the mark in terms of actually producing a better quality product. And that, that for that way, I would like to see ways in, in which performance is actually better, better merit, better merit toward the end result. And I think that there, there are things that could be employed through Carson City. And I think that there are things that could be employed through Carson City on your projects that would be beneficial.
Great, thank you.
So do you have any final comments you'd like to share with us?
I'd just say that I am a longtime resident of Carson City. I've been here for over 40 years. Probably, not to bore you, but I've worked for End Out for 25 and also worked for a private consulting firm for over 20 years, during larger projects in that timeframe. I'm most proud of the contributions that my firm made to the building of the Carson City Freeway. And I think that a number of positives were taken from that, some of which I'm proud of. And that since retiring from full-time employment in 2016, I have looked for some opportunities to make more of a contribution to the community. I do some volunteer work at Carson Hospital. And on the transportation side, I was a shuttle driver up there until COVID was established, and we couldn't do that any longer. But this would be a step up for me, a challenge for me. And, you know, it's pretty much where my career and interest is, and I'd appreciate your consideration to serve.
Well, thank you so very much. We're now at the point where it's always difficult because we get great candidates and volunteers that want to be a part of their community and to truly contribute. So it really becomes difficult for us, but it's what we get paid to do. So does anyone want to go first? Mr. Jones?
Well, both of you have good credentials. Mr. Lloyd, I'm familiar with a lot of your volunteer work and your community effort, and I truly appreciate it. You gave a good response on my question, and I'm happy to hear that that was your response. I've known of Mr. Dodson for probably 40 years. His background is transportation, roads. If I had to vote right now, I would vote for Mr. Dodson.
Okay, thank you. Somebody want to go next? Go ahead, Stacy.
Yeah, I'll go ahead. I would just like to reiterate what Supervisor Jones said. I appreciate Mr. Lloyd's volunteer work to the community, and I know he wants to volunteer more, and I can appreciate that. But honestly, in my opinion, it's just too difficult to pass up Mr. Dodson's experience on the RTC, and I know the RTC will benefit from that. So I would vote for Mr. Dodson.
Ms. Shute?
I agree. I appreciate both of you applying and both of your willingness to be involved in our community. Mr. Lloyd, thank you so much for all you do for the community and Lions Club and coaching and going through your resume. It was like, wow, this is wonderful. And the world needs more people who really give of themselves, and thank you so much. Mr. Dodson, with your background in transportation, and I really love that you brought up complete streets and really that roads are not just for automobiles, but they are also for pedestrians and bicyclists. And that is just, again, such a great way to bring community together. So I would recommend Mr. Dodson to be consigned.
Well, Mr. White, that makes us irrelevant, as the saying is. Once there's three votes, that kind of equals a plurality choice there. But you're welcome to comment if you'd like.
I would just like to thank you both for applying. I will say I have check marks on both sides of the ledger for both of you. Moving forward with RTC, I hope what comes out of that committee going forward is decisions that are made based on what this community needs and not on some best management practice nonsense that comes out of ivory towers. And with that, the mayor's right, it's irrelevant. So I will acquiesce to the majority of the board.
I will accept a motion for the appointment of Mr. Dodson then.
I move to appoint Jim Dodson for a partial term that expires in December of 2022, and this is to the RTC.
Second.
I have a motion in a second for the appointment of Mr. Dodson for a partial term that expires in December 2022. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say no. Motion carried. Again, I can't thank you enough. And don't worry, we never forget great candidates, and we tap them for other committees and other ideas. So don't think you got away from us, because we'll have something in mind for you.
And especially with public comment for RTC, so.
We look forward to it. Thank you so very much. Okay, we're going to move on then and see if we can do item, let's see, we're on 18B, which is for the appointment of two to the open space committee. I believe Mr. Harris is withdrawn.
And we're going to have Susan go first since she's already sitting inside.
Okay, Ms. Flackis is here, so let's do that. You just watched, good morning, how are you? You just saw how a process works. Okay, good. So I just want to get familiar with that. And thank you so much for your willingness to volunteer and to serve. Appreciate that. So we have over 6,900 acres of open space and very limited staff for management. Do you have any recommendations on improving the management system? And do you have any ideas?
I'm a hiker and a former housewife. I'm one of the people who's out there using that open space daily, pretty much. So I have no experience with management.
That's okay. Like I said, there's never a right or a wrong answer. It's, well, honestly, we're just looking for some suggestions, anything that's out there, because sometimes something comes from afar, and then you go, oh, that's a good idea.
Well, I do run into things like homeless people, trashing areas. I don't really know what the answer to that is, but I see it because I'm out there hiking on it. And it just blows me away that Carson City has all of this open space. It's amazing that there aren't houses in the hills and borderlines and everything. It's just wonderful. And so my interest is that we keep it that way.
Thank you. Supervisor Giomi?
So Carson City has an ordinance that allows a developer to reduce lot sizes in a development in exchange for providing parks, trails, and open space within that development. What do you think of this concept? Do you believe the ordinance should stand, or should the developer be required to make lot sizes as required by the underlying zoning?
Oh my goodness. So is the idea to keep the open space open and make the city denser?
Well, it isn't more dense because they don't get to add homes, they just get to decrease lot size and move the lot size to the open space. Does that make sense, what I'm saying?
Are they taking away open space?
Adding open space.
Okay, then.
Well, yeah, they're building on land that is not built on. So to that extent, yes, they are taking up open space. But it's land that they own, as an example. If you own 10 acres, you might be able to put 100 homes on 10 acres. That's the wrong number, but whatever it is. With our ordinance, you could still put 100 homes, but instead of lots being this big, they're this big. And then that savings is then transferred to open public spaces.
Well, that sounds like a wonderful idea, if I'm understanding how you're explaining it. Why would they do that?
Well, because they, well, I don't know if we're going to get into a full reason as to why they might do it, but, I mean, there's probably some cost savings in developing smaller lots and.
So it's probably pretty obvious to you that I have no understanding of things, other than I'm out there walking on this open space and totally enjoying it and hoping that it continues.
Well, I appreciate that passion. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It seems as though we've kind of channeled our questions, because once again, my question is very similar to yours. Thank you for applying. Really appreciate you putting yourself out there. What efforts will you take to move open space to more management of open space land as opposed to land acquisition?
Oh my goodness. Well, I would attend the meetings and learn what's going on with the whole thing. As I've said, I'm out there hiking it, and I'm a novice as far as understanding the politics and the rules and ordinances. And I would think that my knowledge would increase as I was part of the setup, the situation, the committee.
Thank you.
Supervisor Jones?
You guys have all asked around some questions. You say you hike the trails. Are there any improvements that you would suggest that we make to our trails to make them more attractive or more conducive to everybody's? Are there things that you would say you don't like about our existing policies?
So I don't really understand the policies or know the policies, but it's just beautiful out there. It's usually pristine unless someone has come and squatted and left their trash. I kind of like the beauty of the simplicity of it, and I'm not looking, you know, that the city needs to really change things. My experience is when a trail gets washed out, people just start walking around the washed out part, so they create a new trail. So I'm not thinking that there needs to be massive improvement in the situation.
Thank you.
Supervisor Shute?
Hello, and thank you, and thank you for your passion for outdoors and hiking. My question is, what role do you see the open space program playing in addition to the quality of life for our residents? Or, I'm sorry, what role do you see the open space program playing in adding, sorry, to the quality of life for our residents?
Well, okay, most people aren't using the open space. You kind of see the same people out there, running, walking. I'm out there daily, and I see the same people. Oh dear. Well, I would like the open space to be there so that when my grandsons are grown, they're still out there hiking and not walking through neighborhoods, but in this amazing place that we live. I mean, it's amazing to me when you look out there and you just see these beautiful hills with little trails, and you're not seeing big mansions or gated communities or, you know, development. I like the lack of development. I would be pro lack of development.
Okay, thank you.
So thank you so much for applying. We're going to go through the interview process for the remaining candidates. You're welcome to stay, and then we'll select the two for appointment. So again, thank you so much for coming forward. We really appreciate it.
Good morning, how are you? If you'd state your name for the record, it'd be great. It's already green, so you're good.
David Francell.
Francell, okay, thank you. David, have you been through this process before?
Not here, no.
Okay, so what we're going to do is each of us is going to ask a question, and then you can give us any comments or thoughts. And then you're welcome to stay while we interview the remaining candidates, and then we'll make selections.
Okay.
Okay, so again, thank you so much for coming today to offer your volunteer work. I say work nicely, because it is work. We have over 6,900 acres of open space and very limited staff to manage that open space. Do you have any recommendations on how we can improve the management of those acreage?
Well, I think working with, you know, the muscle power group is a big advantage. You know, they've, that, you know, and volunteers is the best you can do. You know, communication, you know, like on Carson Now and so forth, letting people know what's happening, what's opening. You've done some of the hikes with the park rangers and stuff. I think that's, you know, useful, getting people out and, you know, seeing the areas.
Supervisor Giomi?
David, thanks for applying, I appreciate it. Carson City has an ordinance that allows a developer to reduce lot sizes in a development in exchange for providing parks, trails, and open space within that development. What do you think of this concept? Do you believe an ordinance like that should stand, or should the developer be required to make lot sizes as required by the underlying zoning?
Probably a balance on there, that, you know, going too small in an area that's got larger lots in general makes it kind of tough. I've seen some of the stuff where they're going larger lots on the perimeter, a little smaller on the inside. You know, it's a tough question. You know, you've got a housing, you know, crisis almost, and I don't think you should go too small.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor White?
Thank you. Good morning, thank you for being here. What efforts will you take to move open space to more management of open space lands as opposed to land acquisition?
The land acquisition, is somebody taking it over or buying more land? I'm not sure.
So question 18 came forth, there's a formula in that taxing base that allows for open space to purchase, acquire in some means, properties. We've acquired a lot of properties over the last many years. So again, how do we get from acquiring property to managing the property?
Well, like I, you know, like I mentioned, you know, using the resources that are there, the muscle, muscle power, the other volunteer groups, the park services and stuff, trying to manage it, you know, and communicating. It's, you know, with a limited staff, it's hard. You know, it's, you know, trying to get the trail system there so people, you know, respect it. You know, I've seen on some of your agendas, you know, you've got dogs, that's, you've got issues with that. You know, mountain bikers compared to hikers, sometimes you've got conflict. I think it's just communication is a lot of it.
Thank you.
Supervisor Jones?
Good morning.
Morning.
See where you're in muscle power, are you familiar? See where you're in muscle power, are you familiar with, are some of our trails use them?
Yes.
So, taking the condition of the trails, are, do you have any suggestions or should we improve them? Are there things we should delete? What's your, what's your opinion of that? The use of it?
Volunteer, I've, you know, I've done trail maintenance with the muscle power where we've, you know, cut back bush and I know they're building trails, I know on a new trail up there off Ash, the Eagle View, they're reconfiguring kind of a place that, that's a little dangerous. You know, they're really an asset, you know, they get a lot of people that help. I've been hiking with them when, when you could up to a couple, till last year.
Right.
And again, it's, it's the, you know, the communication, getting people to know they're there, go with them, and there's a lot of people will volunteer and, and help with the stuff. I mean, it's, it's hard.
Are you satisfied with the condition of our trails for the most part?
Pardon?
I say, are you satisfied with the condition of our trails for the most part? Or are there any suggestions?
You'd always like them nicer, but, no, in general, yes. I think they're doing a, really a good job, you know, good job, the combination of the city, the park, the volunteer groups, you know, they're, they're working on.
Thank you.
Supervisor Shutey.
Thank you, welcome and thank you for your volunteering with Muscle Powers and Bike Patrol and Snowshoeing, that's awesome and so appreciated. My question, what role do you see the open space program playing in adding to the quality of life for our residents?
Again, it's kind of letting people know it's out there. You know, you've got your, your hikes that they go down by the river to the dam, you know, you know, with people bringing their kids. All those trails on there are real smooth and nice, new trail off of Fifth and Carson, you know, I mean, a lot of those are, you know, real simple biking, nice hiking, you know, family orientated, you know, some of the picnic tables and stuff, you know, I mean, you know, that's what you want to get to, you know, communicate, let people get out and use it, that's what it's for.
Great, thank you.
Thank you so much for applying and again, you're welcome to stay in the audience and listen to the next interviewee and pretty soon we'll be making a decision, but thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Mm-hmm.
Good morning, I am great, how are you?
Good, if you'd state your name for the record.
Yeah, my name's Randy Paul.
Randy, okay, have you gone through any of this before or do you understand the process?
Yes, I was on the Carson River Advisory Committee years ago.
Okay, I'm betting a lot has not changed. Okay, so we currently have over sixty-nine hundred acres of open space and very limited staff for the management. Do you have any recommendations on how we can improve the management of our acreage?
Ooh, hadn't thought of that question. I think, I mean, volunteers are probably the biggest thing I can think of for making things happen. I knew when I was on the Carson Advisory, Carson River Advisory Committee, it was a big burden on the staff and that was one of the reasons that we got basically eliminated and melted with the, the open space committee. And so, I know that was a helpful thing for the city, but I mean, at this point in time, that's all I could think it would be, getting more volunteers out there. There's a lot of, there's a lot of cool things that the open space people are doing and there's, I mean, there is a lot of interest out there. I would imagine volunteers would be knocking doors down for certain things, just takes some management to make that happen.
Thank you. Supervisor Giomi.
All right, thank you, thank you Randy for applying.
Sure.
Carson City has an ordinance that allows a developer to reduce lot sizes in a development in exchange for providing parks, trails, and open space. What do you think of that concept? Do you believe the ordinance should stand or should the developer be required to make the lot sizes as required by the underlying zoning?
Well, I've always thought that development should help pay for parks, however that could happen. I'm not totally familiar with the ordinance, but, you know, nothing worse than having developments come in and the, the result is no funding for parks and water and all kinds of infrastructure. To me, parks is just another important part of the whole deal.
Thank you.
Supervisor White.
Thank you. Thank you for being here, Randy.
Sure.
For your, your willingness to put yourself out there. What efforts will you take to move open space to more management?
Of open space land as opposed to land acquisition?
Well, I mean, it's my understanding that in conversations I had in the past with Juan Guzman, that, you know, some years ago, the whole program has moved into more of a management and the acquisition has really kind of tapered off. So, I mean, my interest is more in, I mean, at this point, it seems to be more of the management, because that seems what, that's the issue that's going on right now. I'm not sure I'm answering your question. Because, because I just, I, I, I really hadn't thought that acquisitions were even much out there at this point in time.
Well, you are correct, there is more of a management emphasis now, but, you know, with question eighteen, there's a whole formula on what that tax base allows you to do. And so, I was just interested, how do we get from what was really acquisition minded to management minded?
Right, well, I thought we were there already, so I don't know what else I can add to that.
My opinion is we're not, so, thank you.
Sure.
Supervisor Jones.
Good morning, Randy.
Good morning.
I know you've indicated that you're familiar with our trails. Are you happy with the condition of them? Are there suggestions you would make for improvements? Are there suggestions you would make for deletions?
No, I mean, I've been really excited about the developments in the, in the, you know, most recent years especially. And that's one of my motivations for wanting to be on the committee is to, you know, be a part of this great period, I think, when we're building all these nice trails and have some input in that. Specifically, I mean, there's, I was just reading about a trail, the one from King's Canyon down to Longview that they've been talking about and, you know, interested in those kind of things, improving. But I am just, I use a lot of the trails, probably like all the other people that are applying for this position. I use a lot of trails, I use a lot of open space and so I'm really familiar with a lot of the properties and so I think that helps me in providing some, you know, my, my take on, on issues out there.
Thank you.
Supervisor Shutey.
Well, thank you so much for applying and, you know, your, your involvement with the River Advisory Committee and Silver Saddle Ranch, so we appreciate your time so much. My question is, what role do you see the open space program playing in adding to the quality of life in our, for our residents?
Well, it seems to me, I mean, anything that gets done with better management of the property, environmental protection of the property, additional trails, I mean, all that adds to the quality of life for all of us. I mean, and that's, that's really, I think, the goal of the open space, having the open space. I mean, I'm just thrilled to live in a community that actually has open space where we can go down to the river, unlike Douglas County, it's just, you know, hard to find places where you can do what we can do here.
Great, thank you.
And again, thank you so much for applying. You're welcome to stay in the audience as we interview the final two candidates and then we'll make our decision. Thank you again so much.
It's up, do you like that, you guys, the new microphone? Oh, okay, that's fine. Now we don't have to have a new microphone.
Hello, everybody. Good morning, how are you, Mary?
I'm fine, thank you, how are you?
Wonderful.
Good.
Are you familiar with the process?
Not really.
Okay, we're each going to ask you a question.
Okay.
And then we'll interview the last candidate and then we'll select, so you're welcome to stay when your interview is concluded, listen to the next one and then be here for the selection process if you'd like.
Okay, thank you.
So I'll just want to start with saying thank you so very much for applying for the position and willing to volunteer for your community.
Thank you.
So my question is, we have over sixty-nine hundred acres of open space and very limited staff for the management. Do you have any recommendation or ideas on how we can improve the management of our open space?
Well, the way I look at open space or any project for the city is it needs to be a collaborative effort between not only the city, but BLM, the Forest Service, and local individuals, muscle powered, because no one can do it alone and you have to build bridges and work together to make things work. You can't just expect one entity or person to do it all.
Thank you so much. Supervisor Giomi.
All right, Mary, thank you for applying, appreciate it. Carson City has an ordinance that allows developers to reduce lot sizes in a development in exchange for providing parks, trails, and open space. So what do you think of this concept? Are you supportive of it or should the developer be required to make lot sizes as required by the underlying zoning?
I think the more open space, the better, so I'm always for getting more space as long as it's not hurting the developer too much, but I'm definitely for as much open space as possible.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor White.
Good morning.
Good morning.
What efforts will you take to move open space?
For management of open space land as opposed to land acquisition?
Could you repeat that again really quick, I'm sorry?
Your mic wasn't on.
Yeah.
It isn't.
Now you're red again, go ahead.
I think Gamare can turn our mics on, right? Am I on?
No, there you are.
On now?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. What efforts will you take to move open space to more management of open space land as opposed to land acquisition?
What efforts would I take? I would try to be involved in building bridges with as many people as possible and talking to as many people as I can to support these projects. And I know finances are always a problem, but to use, you know, any fiscal ability responsibly to, to do this.
Thank you.
Supervisor Jones.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Are you familiar with our trails?
I, I definitely am, yes.
You know, we've got a lot of beautiful trails. Are there any suggestions that you might have for improvements or deletions or changes?
I always want everyone to be able to have access, whether you ride a horse or a bike or walk or run, and I would possibly do a little more signage of, I also love having areas that are just for kids and teaching them how to ride properly so they don't get hurt. I think so far, it's a wonderful job that has been done. I cannot tell you how many people I see out on these trails and for the most part, everyone is very friendly, they are courteous, and I don't think we've had conflicts per se on our trail systems yet that maybe have occurred in other areas. I know e-bikes definitely can be a touchy subject and, you know, the poor horse people, you know, dealing with lots of other things, but you would have to do public education also to just make people understand that everybody has a right to be there and it can be done. I, I don't know if you've ever been to Moab, Utah, but they do an amazing job of mountain bikes, e-bikes, motorcycles, quads, people on foot, and there is a place for everyone and everyone seems to get along just fine out there. So if they can do it, we can do it.
Thank you.
Supervisor Shutey.
Welcome, Mary.
Thank you, Lisa.
Yes, this gal is very, very outgoing and athletic and.
Oh.
My question to you, what role do you see the open space program playing in adding to the quality of life for our residents?
Oh, I just, I get so excited by questions like that. It is remarkable what has taken place in this city so far. We have gone from having, we moved here in seventy-eight and there was a trail, a dirt road to the waterfall and the old V and T, that was it! And improving not only the physical health of people, we have an obesity problem in this country, but having kids being able to get out and do something positive that's a lifelong thing to do. I know in two thousand sixteen, the high school started the mountain bike team. They had twenty kids sign up. There are seventy kids on that team right now and more want to join. It not only improves our health, but our mental health. And the, the new trail out by, on Carson River Road and Fifth Street, that one there, it is awesome to see how many people are using that and I see the same groups of people forming bonds and laughing and talking every day out there. It's just, it's really incredible and I know the more people we have out on bikes and on foot, they pour into our cities and studies have shown that crime rates go down when you have more people out walking and biking. It makes it safer for our kids walking to school, it makes it safer for our elderly people out walking about, and I just get so excited about the possibilities that we have here because we live in an amazing place. We have water trails for like three weeks, bike trails, horse trails, there's a, you know, the off-road area at the south end of Prison Hill and I, you know, whether I'm on this board or not is irrelevant. What's relevant is that we keep moving forward and doing what we're doing here because it's really, it makes me excited, very excited about our trail system.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mary. Again, you're welcome to sit in the audience as we do the interview of the last candidate and then we'll make our decisions and thank you again for applying.
Oh, you're very welcome, have a wonderful day. I have an appointment, so.
Okay.
I'm off.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Should state your name for the record, oop, no, push it again and you're green, good.
Rob Galeri for the record.
It was pronounced Galeri?
Galeri, ignore the second G.
Ignore the second G, okay, great. Have you been through this process before?
No, not this process.
Okay, we're each going to ask you a question.
Okay, well, we're each going to ask you a question, and then since you're the last candidate, you're welcome just to stay right there, and we'll select the two individuals for the committee.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, and again, thank you so much for applying. We really appreciate it. We have over 6,900 acres of open space and very limited staff for management. Do you have any recommendations or suggestions on how we can improve the management of our acreage?
I think the biggest thing for helping in the management of the open space in acreage is going to be working with education outreach to the public. So the more you inform the public on the importance of the open space, how to properly utilize the open space and not take advantage or abuse the open space will help minimize the amount of time and energy needed on staff to potentially remediate, fix, or solve some of the issues that are going on that would require time and energy from the staff.
Great, okay. Supervisor Giomi?
Thank you, and thank you, Robert, for applying. Carson City has an ordinance that allows a developer to reduce lot sizes within the development in exchange for providing parks, trails, and open space. What do you think of that concept? Do you believe the ordinance should stand, or should the developer be required to make lot sizes as required by the underlying zoning?
So my stand with that would be, it depends with what you said on the zoning, what is going to be the location of the zoning, and if the demand for lots in those general areas are going to be for smaller lots, and that they're going to be accepted and being able to provide more open space long-term for the state and prioritizing those areas to create larger areas, increase the acreage, I believe that'd be a benefit for the open space program.
Thank you.
Supervisor White?
Thank you. Good morning. Thank you for coming out today. What efforts will you take to move open space to more management of open space land as opposed to land acquisition?
So again, it would be trying to create and develop partnerships. So I worked with the abandoned mine program for the last eight years in the state of Nevada. There's technically three people that run the entire state program. Without building partnerships and creating leverage, leveraging those partnerships to utilize additional areas and create more availability and cooperation between the different agencies, partners, and everything else, I think you're going to be able to, at that point, better, better utilize those, uh, those efforts to basically create more open space land by not having to acquire additional open space land.
Gotcha.
Supervisor Jones?
Good morning, Robert.
Good morning.
Uh, portion, a large portion of our open space is trails. Are you familiar with our trails?
Yes.
Uh, do you have any suggestions for improving or deleting problems, or any, any way that you, any suggestions you might have for improving our trails?
Yes, so with trails, um, trails is a very generalized term that may be used. So what is that trail used for? Is that trail a hiking trail? Is it a mountain bike trail? Is it an ex, or a horse trail? Are you using mechanized equipment to create trails or to ride them? So dirt bike trail versus a mountain bike trail? So the diversity of the trails would be the biggest thing. As somebody who loves to hike, loves to mountain bike, but I do not dirt bike, I don't want to be on a hiking trail where you got dirt bikes zooming by you, vice versa with mountain bikes and hikers. So there's a diversity that's going to be needed to help diversify the trail system to help alleviate the conflict on those trails. That's going to be the biggest thing to help do that. And of course, there's a huge boom in recreation this last year. I've been recreating in Carson City my entire life, born and raised in this town. The difference is, there's a lot of people that haven't been recreating and don't understand some of the general unwritten rules of trails of, you know, rideaways and what people are doing. And so by increasing trails to help incorporate the additional use of it, but it would also diversify the trails to where there's less conflict on the trail, may help out with some of the, the trail maintenance in those areas.
Good point. Thank you.
Supervisor Shutey?
Well, thank you so much for applying, and I'm intrigued with the abandoned mine. So thank you, because they're just so dangerous. Appreciate that. My question is, what role do you see the open space program playing in adding to the quality of life for our residents?
So the beauty of the open space program and the way and the reason why it was incorporated is we saw the need to protect these areas for long-term and allowing for future people and identifying areas that are really scenic and best for the, everybody to be able to utilize them. So with that, I think that the important thing to do with that is to really forecast long-term future of what the city wants to be and where it wants to become known for. Is it going to be recreation on these areas? Is it going to be trying to do more pristine areas to where you're trying to eliminate the human interaction with them? Where, what are the end goals for these types of acquisitions or land, or trying to acquire them, and then best defining the goals and what you want to do with them? Because recreation is not the only thing that open space is going to be used for. There's other reasons for open space.
Can you build on a couple other reasons that you...
Uh...
So you mentioned pristine, pristine lands and...
So, yeah, so, uh, let's say, um, a marsh near the Carson River, right? Wildlife refuge, so you have riparian areas that you're trying to leave open for wildlife use instead of building, um, mountain bike trails or dirt bike trails, right? So you're trying to do it so that then you have bird watching, um, you have other uses for those that will allow people to use them, but you're also just trying to protect it due to areas like that.
Great, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Well, thank you so much for applying. We're now at the difficult decision that we make as a board is who to select for, um, for these positions. So I don't mind taking the, I'll just take the first stab at it. I think we had just wonderful candidates, and I know they all would do a super job for us because their passion for open space is very clear, right? All of you have that heart for this. But, um, based on the interviews today, I think we, I would like to select Mary Burge and Robert, I'll try not to put the G in it, Galeri?
Galeri.
Galeri, okay. So those are my choices. Stacy?
Um, thank you. I, um, I too appreciate everyone's time. It's very clear that all of you have a passion for our outdoor space as, as do I. I think it really defines our community, and this is one of the most important committees, in my opinion, that we appoint people to. I, I keep remembering what, uh, the chair of the Open Space Advisory Committee said to us just a couple of meetings ago, that they are kind of lacking in cultural resource expertise. I don't know that anyone in this group technically fits that bill, but in my mind, I think the work that Robert has done in the field probably has brushed on cultural resources. I imagine you came across it quite a bit in our minds, so because of that, I would choose Robert Galeri. And it is just so clear that, that while you are all very passionate, um, you know, Mary is like, uh, on, you know, on Epi. I mean, she's just out there. So, um, I would vote for Mary and Robert.
Okay.
Thank you.
Supervisor White?
Thank you. Uh, in, in my view, where open space is going now, we're moving into more of a technical kind of an arena with, with how these lands need to be managed. And for me, today, I saw two applicants that really stood out in that area that I, I think can follow that paperwork and the arduous task of understanding the bureaucracy to do those things, and that would be Robert and Randy. Those would be my two choices. However, I, I can tell you that I certainly could not argue with Mary either.
Supervisor Jones?
I think I agree with Supervisor White that I would vote for Randy and Robert.
And supervise, so, so we definitely have Robert.
Supervisor Shutey?
Oh, the tiebreaker.
I'm glad I went first.
I know.
There are days you go, oh, I'm first.
Um, well, this is where I'm just always so happy to have my rubric. Um, you know, I'm just so thrilled with, with everyone who applied. It's, it's so wonderful, the passion that this community has for our open space and trails, whether it's horseback riding, mountain biking, running, off-highway vehicles, you know, collectively, we're a community and, and there's something for everyone. The tie-breaking word in this case, because I think Randy and Mary both did a phenomenal job with the interview, um, but Mary came right out of the, the, the gate, if you will, collaborative effort in building bridges. And I think in terms of open space and even tying into the question that, that Supervisor Giomi had about zoning and planning and, and smaller lot sizes, with collaboration and bridge building in terms of community and what we're looking for in allowing a community to really be there for everyone, while maintaining the neighborhood feel and the love of the neighborhood, which brings people to certain neighborhoods, I just think collaboration and bridge building is critical. So, um, Randy, thank you for your interest, and I'm sorry, because this is an awful position to be in, but I would like to recommend Mary Burge and Robert.
Okay, so with that, we have a consensus. Ms. Shutey, which, Mr. Giomi says he'll make the motion.
Sure, I will. I move to appoint Mary Burge to a partial term that expires January 2023, and I move to appoint Robert Galeri to a partial term that expires January 2024, and that's to the Open Space Advisory Committee.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion in a second. We're going to appoint, uh, Mary for the partial term for January 2023 and Robert for January 2024. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say no. Motion carried unanimously, and again, thank you so very much. We look forward to, um...
Thank you.
...your great work.
Welcome aboard.
All of you, again, thank you. Thank you. Um, so we're going to go on to item 18C. This is action for the nomination of Heather Ferris to the TRPA for appointment and Hope Sullivan as the alternate. Do I have a motion? Betty?
Sure, since my mic didn't shut off, or I didn't shut it off, I move to submit the nomination of Heather Ferris to the TRPA as the city's representative to the APC and to nominate Hope Sullivan as the alternate APC member.
I second that. I have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carried unanimously. Thank you. Um, we're going to move on to, um, our legislative activity. Ms. Paulson, do we have any items to bring forward?
Not today. We'll receive an update tomorrow by our, at our legislative coalition meeting.
Okay, I have no questions there. So we'll move on to our non-action items for today. Does any member of this board have something they'd like to bring forward or bring up?
Nope.
You got two seconds.
Would this be, um, is this the non-action that we typically have at the very end of the meeting?
Yes.
Okay, I have a little girl I'd like to celebrate.
Oh, right on.
Her name is Tatum Hackler, and I received a glorious letter, um, for Earth Day. And it says, "Dear Lisa Shutey, I care for the earth, which is why I love Earth Day. My family and I try to clean up trash wherever we go. When I am in the car and I see trash, I worry. Please try to help. Love, Tatum Ray Hackler." And you know what? This just made my day, made my month. I'm going to meet Tatum Ray tomorrow morning at 10:00, and I have, um, an Earth Day book, and I just can't wait. But it's just, that's, that's community. And so on the heels of open space and environment and our earth, I just want to give a shout out to Tatum, and...
Absolutely.
It's awesome.
Well done, Tatum.
Yeah.
Well done, Tatum.
Yeah.
Does anybody else have any items? No? City manager, anything you need to communicate under this item?
No.
No? Okay, then we're going to recess. We will go into our closed, uh, discussion to confer with council, and then we will reconvene, our time specific at 1:30 for our final agenda item. So we're in recess.